Okay, call to order the county council meeting for two ten, coming morning tomorrow. I have a motion, there's any addition or corrections to the main thirteen minutes and also calling sound of the sixth minutes also, for any addition or corrections there. Hearing that, is there a motion to approve events of the main six, the main thirteen meetings?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Alex second.
Yes.
Dale, have all those in favor?
Aye.
Seven out. Okay, report collections submitted, there a motion to acknowledge the report collections for the ambulance board and the sheriff or the number nine, Jim, for second.
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Seven out. Review and acknowledge the treasurer's banker reconciliation and comparison reports for March twenty twenty four. Motion for that.
I'll make the motion.
Alex second.
Second.
All of them in favor?
Aye.
Seven out. Review and acknowledge the court's monthly reports for April twenty twenty four. Oh, you don't have that, okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It was in the thing.
You don't have May yet, sorry.
Okay, yeah, okay. So for April twenty twenty four, the court's monthly report.
Well, seconds.
Kelly, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Okay, everyone for emergency communications department agreement assigned by Warren County Commissioner and Council. County Commissioner signed it at their June third meeting. I think there was.
I'm not in favor of it.
Say I'm not favor either.
I, I know it was a two-year agreement, but based off of the information that we had, that there was around a fifty thousand dollar shortfall from their payment. I think it, it should have been amended. Amendment should have been done on that contract to reflect the that it needed to be increased.
The previous agreements before we went to this contract was that we paid two-thirds Warren County, paid one-third of all the expenses and we split the the equipment fifty-fifty. Looks to me like this contract were, were getting feeded out, was fifty thousand dollars, so I'm not going to be voting in favor of this.
But three hundred and seventy was half of what we paid. Now, I mean, that's for everything.
Are you all this new, but that we talked to?
No, that's not.
And I think the contract was for three twenty-five, is that correct? So we're at three seventy spent.
In us, in the equipment, it doesn't, I didn't know that.
It's disappointing that the equipment wasn't discussed at all.
It's inspires an estate.
The only thing I didn't see was the price, so I haven't seen that in favor.
Taylor, can you amend it to your contract?
That's
as long as you're in e- equal agreement?
What's your, yeah, agrees, sure.
Okay.
What would have to happen if we voted down the commissioners' gifts? Warren County? And what, what would be our next, the next step?
Well, um, one thing I question, I don't recall assigning last time, but commissioners actually say of all contracts, is decided. Warren County they have their council sign it because it has a plan there.
I wonder if they're aware that there was a shortfall.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm curious.
They were perfectly happy to get one, but the two, they're, you know, they put it be two years ago. I wonder what's that, mention on that or?
I'll find out. I don't know, that was something I didn't vote on, because I wasn't part of it, so.
I would think that if we didn't agree to it, that the commissioners would have to go back to their commissioners and work out an agreement that is beneficial for everyone. I mean, we have, we have actual hard figures now going into that, we didn't have hard figures. I don't know that equipment was even discussed, uh, you know.
In the original meeting, in the original meeting that we had, it wasn't that we were going to
Yes, we did.
What happened last commission, maybe not the last, but it would discuss there that we are what, another year agreement? And we're supposed to pass this on the same dollar figure.
Yeah, because it was a two-year contract.
And I don't, I can see why we can't really go back and see if they can't do, talking with each other and you know, we're holding up our end, which all that.
But if you remember back then, there was, there was quite a bit of drama
Yeah.
between the two.
Yeah, they were, and we even passed a resolution or something that we supported.
Staying together.
Yeah. Yes, yes. When they tried to talk about doing the, the local agreements and doing away with the one-third, two-third, fifty-fifty on that things, they were pretty upset about it, but meaning it will be very expensive to both counties. Because you gotta have the same amount of people for nine-one-one, whether you're one county or two counties, that is beneficial to have two counties spread together, but it's gotta be fair on, on the expense, we can't set that as one county.
Well, I'll make a motion to put it on the floor so we take a vote.
Okay.
I'll make that motion to get a second, so.
I just want, I mean, I'm, if it was a two-year agreement, I think, you know, you stand by your word, but the what bothers me is the equipment, because that caliber system that we bought wasn't cheap and that wasn't normal equipment that I mean, that was a huge deal and it's a benefit for everybody and that wasn't discussed bothers me.
Dana, do you know if Warren County said anything in regards to reimbursement for part of the caliber? Not to your knowledge?
The contract we renewed, I am saying make several proposals to commissioners, unfortunately, so, but if I, about the equipment money wise for Warren County to help with the great work of Warren. I also talked to Barry, because I thought it was all my shoulders and the whole contract gave us for Barry and the commissioners. So I gave him my, I felt like he needed extra from Warren County, so it wasn't in the contract, my knowledge. However, he knows where I said, but it didn't give me the price, so. That's where I was at with that, so I gave all the numbers that I had, because I had talked to the following money issue.
So they were, so they were fully aware of the cost of caliber?
Yes, thank you, comments, they know how much the mortgage, they know all that. I'm not sure the, the verdict or the overage of what was sent through Barry or the commissioner to Warren County for this contract. I do know that I did mention that we do need the extra money and we should for the calories of our equipment. Especially with prices going up over the years and it's a different system out here now, it's better. And unfortunately, it costs more money than what.
I guess it was, I thought it was to my understanding that when we discussed if Warren County was going to reimburse for part of the caliber system, that the commissioners, the commissioners at the time was going to talk to Warren County about that. I don't know if that ever happened or if an agreement was ever made.
Doesn't appear to be.
You know, contracts can be amended. Contracts can be terminated and a new contract can be formed and agreed upon, so. I second your motion, Jim, to get it on the floor. Did you do that? Okay.
Jeff did, yeah, okay, sorry, I have a discussion.
I just
We needed that.
Yeah, it's just a little bit of mess. Yes, you it's just one bit of mess.
That relationship was I feel like they have a relationship of all my life. You know, Warren.
All I'm saying is the twins commission. See what I'm saying? They're the ones that have to. But I'm, I'm no doubt.
Yeah, they got, they got fair share. My opinion, so. Uh, we ready for the call, then? Okay, so the motion, is your motion to approve it?
Yes.
Okay, so all those in favor, raise your hand to approve it?
Yeah, what you just, what you say, what? Yes, my motion is to approve it, yes. Yeah, that's, that's, that's how it leads you, oh, yes, gotcha, gotcha, yes, okay, that's, that's how reason that, yes, okay, my bad.
Okay, so, who stands opposed and favor of approving that? Okay, opposed? Please, zero seven. Okay, additional preparations, I will open the public hearings for additional preparations at nine twelve A M. Anyone who would like to talk about the additional that are on here are welcome to address the council.
I, I, can I say something? Plan Commission fifteen thousand dollars for consulting fees, it was up for it, do we know? Do we know what it's for? I assume it's for the?
It's on updating the ordinance, zoning ordinance daily.
Do we know why he's doing it, not the commissioners are doing it, or is it, is this something that he has to do his expertise on?
The charging on the permits and things like that on that.
Okay.
Zoning ordinance. Just signing the dolphin solar, I will be funding this week for their portion of all those fees, so hopefully we'll get some money back, but it's just cash, so we got right now, and I love to spend. If he continues to work on the ordinance, it'll, it'll keep one of that.
It's not an obligation, it's not a budget, yes, I, I don't, I don't have our, I don't have the plan commission's budget with me, but.
It's, there's, there's, the fees in the budget.
Yeah, the plan commission's budget is posted anyways.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
But when they reimburse us, does that go in county general?
County general, that's where it was paid from.
That's why she, Amber, before she's done, asked for additional, because she's got to pay for all of the dolphin um, stuff to Roger, but then when it's reimbursed, it doesn't go back to her, it goes to county general, so she two months ago, or so she asked for additional, but this fifteen thousand wouldn't be reimbursed by anybody, right, because this is just for the ordinance, this had isn't.
I'm just saying that's
Right.
expenses will be for
Okay.
It could be for, I don't, I guess he is still reviewing the dolphin solar permit.
Yeah, I know.
But it's just to cover up for those expenses.
Okay, does he break it out, so you know what to
Yes.
charged on, okay, okay.
Once a hour, we because of contact.
He took a vote at last meeting, had toy meeting to not vogue on that dolphin soul, because he wanted more information. Here we have a fifteen thousand dollar consulting fee to the A P C committee. And, um, I do say there's money to deposit.
Right, this, this, yeah, this, he didn't share this with the plan commission, this, this is, you know.
And apparently it's been done. I said apparently the work had been done by, by so kind of, I was here too.
Well, part of this is because we want the zoning ordinance changed, so he's gonna have to, you know, he is working on that to bring it to the zoning committee and figure out what, what changes they want.
So this, I just need to know what this is for, because if it includes anything for Gina Exolar, I can't vote on that portion of it.
So part of it probably does, yeah.
Okay.
Because I can't hundred percent say why I'm going to get a bill for.
Right.
So.
So what's the consultant fees, forty-five thousand dollars for the mission?
That is filled from Kenzy Company.
Federal financial program about that, for that, for that financial report that I just showed. Wondering how none.
This is kind of like an oxymoron, really.
Correct.
Look what we do. Yeah, that's right. The meeting, that's one thousand.
Yes, that was a shortfall.
I was gonna ask you if that's part of their contract.
Is they approved that believing last week, the nine thousand and twelve thousand? So they approved it before you approved it?
Yeah, yes, there's
Yeah, they have to bring it to
But and then they bring it to us that they need additional appropriations.
I see.
So they can't spend it until we
You say, okay.
Yeah.
So, um, do you, can you get like, do they have this, could you like an itemized, like, I didn't ask you, send one, pause and pause? Is somewhere and say like, we might not.
No, this is part, this is their, part of their contract. Yeah.
They, they sign it. Well, and what happens, see, we have to do our budget in August for the next year, and we based it on what the contract was for last year is what we budgeted.
Got it.
And now, when in January, when the commissioners sign a contract, Paul said we want nine thousand dollars, we want to run the year to to run the program, you know.
Can you never say no to these things? It's just, I mean, like, they don't have to live within their budget, they, they just act from it's a new contract. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Every year, we contract. And when we set it in August, we set it based on what it was for twenty twenty-three.
And Paulson Pauls do break it down with their request for the following year, like how much they spent, how many dogs and cats they picked up, oh, that's they, the whole.
And, and the city of Attica pays towards their
That's well.
Yes.
So each of these would have, and the computer maintenance, that would have a, you know. But someone has, who has the understanding of what was over and above the budget? You know, from the year before. Do you get that, like?
Well, and so the computer maintenance is for salary B C, that they care of all the computers in the county. They have a yearly contract. And again, on that one, it was based on when we budgeted in August on what it was in twenty twenty-three, well, in January, since this it's fall out dollars more. Until now, this is a
Where does it say what the budget was from last year? You just have to be, have been here last year, the whole budget, I mean, like, what Paulson Paul's budget is, what computer maintenance budget is?
True.
Like a percentage increase that, so you know what this was.
Do we know what the ambulance additional is for? Do you have that, do you want, she's looking that up?
The fifteen thousand is what compared, which which the delay on trucks, I added that in Austin Avenue, Avenue by name. That would be here, five thousand sixty dollars status for insurance. That's been utilized last year to help us with insurance discovery and really go vote on my part and put the insurance, so we'll put it in August right now. To get out to the end of this year and the next year, we'll have a, do a lot, well, it's a line I have for insurance.
You still feel like you're getting more?
Yes.
You're collecting more, that's true. From that.
Finding, she'll, she'll put in perhaps one or so insurance discovery or give right almost a hundred percent.
Okay.
Fine. By the time they throw up, but I'll add base for itself.
Dana, that five thousand was the extra on that caliber, wasn't it? Yep.
Sounds like the number number. I was wrong, I think, when we do budgets this year, we need to have, we need to have every contract.
I have any questions about the N R, M H, I mean, that's beneath the county share of the money from the state that we paid.
Maybe crossings?
Yeah, yeah. That would not understand.
Question on that. I would like the, um, when we vote on the resolution, let's take the consulting fee out of there, uh, and do that as exactly one.
For the fifteen?
For the fifteen thousand.
So that Kelly can vote, yeah.
So, and, and I, I don't think I can vote on that, if I wanted break down, it was one of those and I want to see more liberty sweep deed. Kelly, not too much about that, and for Roger, Bill, County Board, consulting on that, and they haven't even applied for permit, I really provide to know why you're paying Roger to, to do that.
Probably need
When they haven't even applied, they should have paid Roger to.
Direct.
Would you repeat, would you repeat?
That Liberty Sweet Pete Solar, if Roger billed the county for consulting on that, and they haven't even applied for permit. And they had instruction target date of twenty twenty-four, completion target date of twenty twenty-five on paperwork, they haven't applied for permit. My opinion is that they should have built Roger directly, so with that, though I did a breakdown, I'm not voting for the fifteen thousand or the nineteen, so that out separate. But I will take with the, do the software and the others, but I, I think we need to question the insurance for these consulting fees and, and what we're getting very first.
We, we've asked for the fees to be increased, especially on those things, and that's what would cover that time period before, you know. And I think denying it is the only way to get some movement, because they just keep ignoring us that that's not necessary and it's not working.
More amber left in porch than that asked.
Right.
Well, and didn't we do a moratorium on any new applications?
Correct.
Or, so I, I agree with you, they should be paying Roger directly.
They should need to, they increase the fee to A P C, increase the fees.
We've asked for that to happen and and it hasn't, it's kind of fallen on deaf ears, I feel like, so. Yeah. But I think if we keep approving things, why would they change it?
Right. And they said we're not going to increase them, because if you increase them too much, they won't come here, and I said, if you increase them, they're gonna come here regardless that they want to be here, so.
Colleen's giving that information for you, is anyone else having any public comment about the additional?
On this M V H, all of those are those the increase in salary? What, what is this?
The labor or something?
Match, we have to match five hundred thousand dollars.
I'm, I'm talking about this, the last section.
Yes. Increase in salaries.
Okay.
And this, these are these are additional that is out of there, that is, this is an out of county general.
Right.
Uh, because they, they have they have money in the county council, M V A perspective, M V A. Let you find out.
Okay, calls and calls. For twenty twenty-three, the contract, when it's stated three thousand? No, thirty-five thousand, sorry.
So this year is going to be forty-four thousand?
I, this is, see, that's the thing, I know they use full contracts, and I didn't have time to do that. Between the thirty-three thousand as well was appropriated in twenty thirty. We also want to appropriate in twenty-four. We added, in the corporation adjustment in twenty-three for two thousand dollars. Which brought it up to thirty-five thousand, and that's what was expended. And then this year, they asked for twelve thousand more.
The best forty-five or forty?
I think forty-four thousand, forty-four thousand.
Okay, so thirty-three was probably where they voted in twenty twenty-two, we betted in twenty twenty-three. And they increased their contract to thirty-five thousand, so we added an additional two thousand in twenty twenty-three. Here, correctly, and then this year, we betted thirty-five thousand, they want forty-four to this year.
Yeah, true.
Yeah, it's definitely going, like, over the years, really, yeah. They had several dollars in, in, I didn't raise your own.
They pay in too, but I don't know if they paid any extra.
I don't know, but I'm sure the town estates pay for the rest. I mean, that Kevin's has his own, and will be made paid to community, uh, part of it.
So, does he have a contract, it's just for, in a county, you're separating, I don't.
I, I don't think the town house will pay, so, you know.
Don't think Peter, he heard that already.
Kingman.
I don't think so, I think it's just sitting, it's two cities, so we can't make things. The one I sounded dead, no, a lot, it's not too far from me. Oh, I call, yeah. So, yeah, they took care of, and King of God, so maybe they do more than what that dog will say.
So they're, they're saying that their expenditures are going to exceed their contract amount by nine thousand dollars, but we don't know what those expenditures would be.
Hmm, not like, I mean, they just raised the contract, they don't have
Their budget.
Right, right.
But
We won't know that till.
All they do is give me a report at the end of the year, like a contract deal, asking how the dogs and cats, they get jobs, stay in meters, cost of food, things like that.
No.
Yeah, jump in a little bit, so at the community foundation, we, we manage lots of the donations that come in, and then we just forward those on to Paulson Pauls. And my guess is that this contract is not the majority of all the dollars that come in to Paulson Pauls, and so their fundraising could maybe be down in the past year. Four or two, I know they had to replace a roof on their facility, that was partially paid for by a bequest, uh, that they received, this thing through the foundation, so I don't know that necessarily their expenses are growing up, but maybe that their income is less than it was previous years, because they don't operate totally upon contracts. Private donations and contracts, so they would probably have to tell us, you know, a little bit more. Which it is, if expenses are greater than usual or private donations are down. You know, capital expenses, I don't know.
I I just have a question because I just want to know, are we required to? Have a contract with him?
I don't, I don't think. I mean, you're certainly not required to have a contract with them, I don't think there's anything because. I don't know this because I think Tipton dealt with it a few years ago, I don't think there's anything that requires the county to have a humane society or anything like that at all.
And it's relatively new because it used to be in downtown Attica. And then just because of the noise and all the traffic and things like that, uh. The city gave them a year or two years notice that they wanted them out of the city limits of Attica. So they had a hard time finding a place, and so that's where they ended up, where they're at, and they had to. Kind of get it out of town, so there wasn't anything. Prior to that, maybe it's been longer than what I think, maybe it's been three to five years where they've been, you know, where they're at now. But the county didn't have a contract prior to that, got on the way.
The city just took care of that.
I think it's a pretty big jump without. Much explanation, so, you know, that's what concerns me most. For one, from thirty five to forty four, that's nine, what I was at, which is twenty five percent or so, maybe. I mean, I know expenses have gone up. In that way, but I guess I'd like some explanation.
Give me table.
Any more further comment about? And I will close the hearing at nine thirty two. You know, let's do resolution twenty twenty four dash eight, county general. Ambulance office supplies, five thousand six hundred dollars, foot repair, fifteen thousand. And radio dispatch computer software, five thousand forty dollars. I made a motion. Second. All those in favor of those three? From the middle? And, um, we. Hey, you want to mark out? The plan that we did not need fifteen thousand on the plan for. Okay, so now. Do I need to sign a new number for the plan commission? So then maybe get.
Eleven, four eleven.
Okay, so now, uh, resolution one hundred twenty four dash eleven. For the fifteen thousand dollars for consulting fees for the planning commission. Is there a motion to approve that?
I will to put it on the floor.
Yeah. Also, good on the floor. So then all those in favor of the fifteen thousand dollars consulting fees for the planning commission, raise your hand. Those. They don't, they're not moving. I'm going to sustain abstaining on that, so we have, uh, zero, five, and. And then do, Kelly is abstaining.
Oh.
Um, abstaining or not voting?
Okay, so, oh, those.
So it's zero five.
Kelly and Dale did not vote.
Yeah.
Me too, abstaining.
Okay, and we have a resolution twenty twenty four dash nine, defeated. You mentioned consulting forty five thousand.
If it was paid to Kelly, wouldn't it?
Yeah, same as Kelly, yeah, so that's my answer already for. For data. And then, oh, make a motion for that. And do, uh, do your maintenance, all about the dollars. There are motion for that resolution. Will do that.
Second.
You notice? I'll move the major of that. Um, I think we need to make five hundred dollars for that. Tell me to leave something for that as well. Nine thousand dollars for all of the laws.
Make a motion to table it. Wasn't that?
Table, okay.
To get more information.
So.
I second that.
Kelly. We can table that until we get more information, all of the major table in. That's set it up. Okay, we have resolution twenty twenty four dash ten, uh, M V H restricted. Five hundred thousand, uh, for the county match to the state. Uh, laborers nine thousand five hundred, uh, the Q bridge, bridge crew, three thousand five hundred, assistant supervisor, fifteen thousand five hundred. M V H supervisor nine thousand, laborers eighty nine thousand thirty dollars, shop foreman, two thousand five hundred, and it's six thousand. Is there a motion to, um, leave those appointments?
On that county, I'm sorry, on that county match, how much was it that we were going to get, one point?
One point five.
Five million? Okay. Yeah, community crossings.
It's been that prepaid, but so I forgot what I wanted to announce. Starting road, okay.
It's gonna be a racetrack.
This is increasing wages, so who's that started?
I think it did, that's when we loaded on that, yeah, we did that reservation, yes.
Okay, so gentlemen, the motion, there's that. All in favor? Okay, transfers, oh, okay, so this one is. Uh, M V H transfer from, um. Other garage and motor, sixty one dollars seventy two cents to radio repairs.
I'll second. I did, sorry, please.
Second, all of us in favor?
Fine.
Okay, um. Some discussion, um. Need for request for additional appropriations in the. Oh, Colleen, I wanted to ask. The board, because we have money in our county accountable budget. I I hate to see it's been money to advertise for conditionals when you've got money for things that that need to be paid. Uh, county election board, their contract to run this computer system was twenty two thousand dollars more than what. We anticipated last year when we did budget in August, um. And radio dispatch, um, Dana wants to. Comment on that, we have overtime.
Overtime, thanks to my, this is on here, um, in the county, we were taking. The funds to to radio, but the border counties around the money, so I'm now having to go to. Um, state where. Getting close for that, um. So I'm asking for a change and be on the safe side, I have to get these other two things. Um, there are vacations. I practically slept last year, a lot of the days were vacations, so I'm trying to get back on the study, a lot of that, I've had to say. They can better go to holidaying, I didn't realize, I was young, that we were going on many of our holidayings, so that I was just. They're covering the holidaying.
And then, uh. Where there is per. I assume that he drafted the interludes. Okay, so that's for that. Invoice number one, we're, that's. For a little bit lighter, so. If everyone is okay, uh, of these, those four bills. You can take that out of county council budget, not have to advertise, not have to, you know, county general.
Can I ask?
Yes.
Anyone is, um, that for the computer services? Has anyone, I know paper ballots has been something that has been talked about, you know, generally. Do you know what that would cost?
Well, one, this the state has to approve. And they have not approved paper ballots. Uh, you have to do, the the state recommends certain companies to run your elections. That's all you could do, the state election board sets that policy.
And they give matching funds or something else?
They don't. We have to pay it if if now the city. In the city election years, county is in the negative of all all towns, if they have an election, they have to reimburse only the part. Of expenses that happened in their city. But otherwise, the county has to, yeah, it's for all. They need to run the elections and we have to run it the way the state tells us, uh, the system. Now, they did give us voting, the new voting machines were given to us by the state, we did not give those, so. And actually. They were giving those from another county because our county didn't apply and. They had plenty of extra machines, so we were giving those three machines. Paid for, but we have a a fund. Part of the property taxes, it's all key voting machines. And that collects about sixty thousand dollars a year, so we have to buy machines or the state says you gotta have this equipment. We have that money to pay for it. We have.
They get taken apart so they make sure they're not. Hold it in.
I mean, they do, they do kind of look tests on them and we, and I know they have some sheriffs that these command and mark ballots. So that when they ran them, they can make sure they go over ours. So, okay, so everybody over there with that, getting that out of that. If fractional services. Okay. Uh, so, uh, there's even more, there's a long time to stay. That probably for their motion, okay. Second, small boys in favor? Okay, voice number one from Envoy, a hundred and forty three thousand nine hundred thirty eight dollars. Want to address that, or? I know you requested information from Envoy of what the bills are.
Thank you, Colleen, you said everyone had to, you know, I got that credit.
Yeah, they, yeah.
That's as far as I've gotten, so.
It was eighty thousand in architecture, thirty seventy thousand. Five hundred in facility condition assessment for ANX, twenty six thousand four thirty eight. In reconstruction and redevelopment services. Management estimate, the final schedule and market validation. And then twenty thousand dollar legal fees. I email, I don't have that. I emailed Justin and called him envoy back. I questioned the legal fees, what requested a breakdown? And basically, the answer I received was, it's a. Package deal with the legal department. And the way they bill, that's the only way they can do it, basically, is what I came up with from his emails. And I said, well, can we appropriate it? He's like, I understand what you're saying, but it's, it's this package thing. And I I felt like even had emails, I'm like, you know.
Exactly, I told you.
All of his response was.
I mean, yeah, I mean.
My concern too is, is that they're still remaining. Contractual. Dollar amount there.
Right, and and we said we voted, right, long ago, we were not going to pay any bills on that. Because that contract was signed without our.
Absolutely. That was my understanding.
Yeah.
So, was my understanding, right?
Okay, here's here's his response. I understand what you're saying, Colleen, essentially, since the legal group bills is a flat fee all at once. My only option is to pass through the full amount we owe them. In theory, we could adjust the draw so that the twenty thousand dollars been broken up over a couple of months. But this only delays our turnaround payment to legal consultants. We will ultimately be paying the full twenty thousand dollars either way. I kind of felt like you thought it was all on the project, but that was just my understanding.
Well, we actually, the defense is still doing the project.
But when we left here, that meeting, you took on. It felt like you're going to go ahead with her, so.
Well, we told them we voted not to fund that contract, so.
My only concern is, and this is a tailored question, the commissioners have signed this contract with Envoy. If we are in breach of that contract from not paying anything. What can happen?
What can happen? Again, I have some contract, but I mean, what can't happen is exactly what you envisioned, right, is they they file suit and say, hey.
Sue us.
You signed this contract, you owe us this this money. If what you're talking about is just that email that you read, I mean, I read, I hear that as Envoy engages some firm to do all their legal. Legal work, this firm says, hey, if you get a project, it's twenty thousand dollars, and they get halfway through the project, say, hey, sorry, and the folks say, we we started the project, it was a flat fee. You're not going to go through it, that's on you, you know, you need to try and recover that with them, but you're paying us twenty thousand, not necessarily that he's going to keep paying, that means that they're going to keep working on it, just that they've already billed him for it, it's what's done, it's done.
So say we pay this bill, but it still says that we are under contract for another eight hundred and some thousand dollars. And we've told them that we're not moving forward with this project, can they come back and say, well, per the contract? We are.
Sure they could, again, I haven't seen the contract. My recollection in whatever December or so was that the your guys' motion was. A cap, was it like a a million or something with some cap? Uh, and that you wanted to be informed. But you wanted everything approved, I think is the is the is the sticking point, I think you talked to us a couple meetings ago, so the council wanted everything approved before it was expended. And so I think. The county signed it. Or at least approved it with that understanding. So yeah, could they? Sure, they could, but I mean, I think that'd be the main point, it would be. The council, before anything was signed, because that was signed in what, early this year, before anything was signed, the council's motion was, yeah, we're on board, but this.
Oh, they signed it on March twenty eighth without consulting us. And then we voted in May, meaning that we're not paying their expenses.
Yes, in December, though, you voted.
For it.
For it, up to a certain amount, but you wanted to approve every.
Expenditure.
Yeah, expenditure, before they started work on certain things, you wanted to be on board, so.
I'm not so sure that this breakdown of stuff isn't the stuff that was done for us to get to the point of saying, whoa, you know, I mean, this is the stuff they provided us. For us to say, this isn't feasible. So I can see where they feel this.
We owe them this much.
Needs to be paid because we had to have this stuff for us to realize this isn't feasible.
We still have a bill out, though you have leverage.
Correct.
So. That's right.
And I agree with that.
We're not going to pay this bill until this contract is. Evaded or.
Terminated.
Or negotiated. Fired and then for whatever.
So my recommendation is to be to say, we're not paying yet.
I would have to look back in minutes, but I thought maybe at the last meeting that we said, hey, we'll pay everything they've done to this point, that could be my only concern.
Well, we said they had to give us a bill up. Through when you made, remember, eighteen thirty?
Make thirty.
Thirty, but we need itemized bills.
And I understand what Taylor's saying is they contract with. And I understand what Taylor's saying is they contract with a firm to do their legals, and the firm said. It's a flat rate of twenty thousand dollars regardless of how much they do.
But then the argument is that on them or is that on us? You know, they're the ones that contracted that legal team, is that on them or on us?
What more I'd like to miss? Eighty, eighty thousand, you want more than that?
And, and the Ambroseco added on for Ambroseco.
This was the only question.
Make sure it didn't does, thirty-five percent of the dollars, like, if Ambrose goes adding on a bill. So to help me in the future, uh. We say, yeah, we're gonna approve it up to a certain amount, that we want to sign off on everything. Does it have any discussion ourselves about what that expectation was? What we wanted to see, how we wanted to see it? What information that you wanted in a particular invoice, seems like we're, we're going backwards now because we didn't. Make clear our expectations.
I think that, I think back in December when we agreed to that, we were of the understanding it was going to be on. The highway building, I thought. But I could be wrong, but I thought that's what we agreed upon, and then we did not realize it was. The courthouse until they came in here with all of these plans. So I think that's, I was totally thrown off. By that, and I think I expressed it during that meeting, that I was of the understanding that this was going to be on a highway building, not. On the courthouse as of yet. Well, they came in here with, yeah, I'm sorry, the annex, let me correct that, the, the annex.
But then I say, tell you two folks, like in February or March, that.
The highway building?
The highway building, it's going to save, save the county.
Almost half the money.
Yeah.
The one we voted, but when we voted together. We didn't know the price. We didn't know a hundred and twenty-two thousand.
Well, they couldn't tell us anything.
Well, no. Plus the fact, we didn't know anything about this building project, so after the fact, they said we built that is. You know, and it's more than what we thought. We also were not on the same scale with the commissioners. And the architects, that's what we want to find. And we decided we didn't want to find that end.
I think.
Hundred twenty-three thousand dollars. All these bills we're getting, we're getting after the fact.
Right.
And I don't see how we can spend a hundred twenty-three thousand dollars on something we don't know about. I don't remember signing any name, my name really contra. Fund that ends. Order fund of the rocks, order fund of the sports. We never had that. We don't talk about that. And Bill, you're right, when we came to that meeting. Are doing meeting, we did not have any expectation as to what we were going to have to do. How much money we want, I kind of tossed it out in the air, and, and I know this. But right now, we're, boy, I don't want to fund a hundred forty-three thousand dollars. But not having anything down the paper, so Taylor, uh, my point to you. Then back when, when you said that we had to came to take a look at this whole project. Without a dollar bill, is that what you're saying, a million dollars, I think you said, we had appropriated a million dollars? Did you say that?
Something in December where. I think the motion was, was something like, you know, we'll approve this contract, but they can't spend more than X amount.
Well, I thought the one point, the one million dollars we talked about. That was renovating the building, and then all the design. Total, that's all we were going to spend.
I think it's one point six.
One six, she hasn't written down.
And so legally, that's why under the, you know, with us not signing anything. The contracts have been signed. By the commissioners.
I think this, this is a problem we have ran into before, over the last three and a half years, that. We saw it with the enterprise contract. They signed a contract, now you figure out how you're going to fund it, that is not how it works, so. Our trust in the previous current commissioners, excluding Erin. Is, was broken at that time, in my opinion. And so. If it looks like we're constantly questioning things or going back in time, it's because that level of trust has been broken. And so we're trying to rectify that. We did not know that they were going to do plans for all three floors of the annex, we thought it was just going to be a single floor. And the idea was that we're going to move everybody out of here, over to the annex so they could renovate this building. And we were not in favor of that. Um, so, getting back to the money. I really, I don't want to pay it.
I think, I mean, they've given us an itemization, but because we voted. The time period last time of what was completed and what was done by this date, we would pay. I think the itemization needs to show when they did this stuff. So we have proof that. They're not billing us for something after.
The date.
After the date of what our last. Proof of us.
Let me ask something.
That makes sense.
Um, back in, back in twenty-three. Uh, they bought the annex, brought, bought make-up forms, so, and then, uh. Andrew kind of took charge of that, do, do you, do you guys agree with that? Okay, and then he came, he, he came in. Emailed me kind of a drawing. Of what it would look like, and, and the figures. And we, and we were in about a million and a half, friends, am I right? So is that how you guys? In your mind, you were thinking.
Maybe.
That was stupid.
Maybe it's looking like, it might be a possibility if they, if he came within those.
It stopped there.
We didn't do anything, right?
Right, except consulting fee. That's all we got. Nothing but consulting.
So, we did pay.
From there, it was down.
And prior to that, it was thirty-five thousand dollars for the room down in the basement.
So, here's, Andrew texted on November eighth, twenty twenty-one. That buying the building between three hundred fifty and four hundred fifty thousand. That it would be, uh. Initial repairs, fifty thousand dollars. Nine-one-one corner renovation, two hundred thousand, EMA renovations, twenty-five thousand. Meeting room renovation, fifty thousand, IT, one hundred thousand. So total investment, eight hundred and ninety. He's been, he's, he, I, he talked to people and. I mean, he brought in drawings, the plan, I understand, he brought to us, um. So.
They were going to change those drawings. They were going to change those diagrams.
They did.
They did, and that cost them.
Right. I'm fine with.
I think this, yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. Who changed the envoy and, and did all that, so.
Sure, the, what's the state law about, uh, that you reviewed with us earlier about, uh, county council?
If the state board of council said that if commissioners sign a contract. That the council does not sign, it's null and void behind that. It's whatever. I, I'm not going to pay for this bill, so. I mean, there's gotten this in your negotiation. I think that's six weeks worth of a lot of money.
Well, there's. It's like with an attorney, there's no billable hours here, you know, you don't have. Set of drawings, okay, well, are you billing us by the hour? Are you just billing us a flat rate? And that's like twenty thousand dollars for legal fees, what for? How many hours were involved in that? What? You know, I want to make sure that I'm getting billed for what they've done.
We're billing us forty percent of that total. You go back, and they're still retaining each one of the rest of that. You regret that contract, there's a retain of about two hundred eighty thousand dollars.
I don't want to shirk, shirk a bill, I don't want to not.
Right.
Pay something, but I'm with Denise, I'd like to know, make sure that we're, if we're getting charged for something, it's in that time period in which we agreed to. I mean, I don't think that's too much to ask.
So if all this was in May, you're cool with paying the bill?
Well, I'm not cool with it, but.
But I mean, I mean.
But I think we have to.
I, I, and it's unfortunate, it's unfortunate, but yes.
Because I am afraid this stuff was the prior stuff.
We know a hundred forty-three thousand, that's, that's what, and we pay that, or we're going to get another bill.
See, that's what I mean, if we had a date.
That's right down.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. I appreciate Erin ask, you know, starting the process and getting that breakdown, but I think that needs to go a little deeper. Of what we want, so.
And when you, I don't know, I just. When we do construction, it doesn't look like that, I have an itemized bill that says. I have this, this is what it is, and this is what I'm charged for, and it goes down the line, I don't have something like this, this is too. Beg.
For me. Some insight, this from the architectural point of view, it's extremely rare for them to give hourly expenditures. So, they charge for a phase of the project, you can verify when they completed that phase. But it's usually a full flat fee, and it's up to them to manage their hours. So that might be why you're seeing.
Kelly, I think that. Nobody, if, if nobody got off dead center during that project, so. Uh, one of the commissioners felt like they were getting pressure. Just from public and us and everybody, what did they have going on with four hundred fifty thousand to spend, so one of them.
I think what was surprised. Right. One thing.
Andrew's, he was.
He was out of it at that point.
He was busy.
But I think hindsight's always twenty-twenty, and this doesn't matter one way or another, what I'm going to say, but I'm just going to say it. If they had came to us and said. Here's what we're thinking. How do you feel about it? You know, yes, that's their job, but we got to write that check, so we have to work together. So if they would have came to us and said, here's what we have so far with the annex, we're thinking about doing all three floors. Which that's going to increase the cost, because we're going to have to have an elevator, we're going to have to have fire suppression systems. Okay, then we could have said, no, 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 we don't want all three floors done, we agreed to the single floor. We're okay with that, because this would have looked a whole lot different. And we would have been progressing forward at that point. Not that we can't use those plans, if we decide to keep the annex, it's not that we can't use what they've done. We just have to narrow it down. You've got a full set of architectural plans for any renovation for all three floors, but we don't want to do all three floors, we focus on the center floor, we do what. On the main floor, and we do what needs to be done.
Oh, we got drawings for three hundred length for value.
No.
I mean, that's the total cost. Then they had to retain.
No, no, total cost is a hundred and forty-four thousand. Eighty thousand dollars worth of schematic design.
I just looked at the contract, that's what I.
Okay.
And they were forty percent of the total. And that's why we got a hundred forty-three thousand dollars. Most that we. Don't have the information for a hundred forty-three thousand dollars. Oh, yes, when I make the motion, that we can need, we need to know.
So you want to table it until we get further information?
If, I'm just trying to make sure we stay away from legal stuff here, Taylor, that's why I'm, I'm concerned about. But I, I don't, well, I don't want to pay it, no, but I don't want to get into a legal fight, and that costs us more.
Yeah.
So, hey, one.
Most, I've made most of the table. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in table.
Alright.
In some way, we can specify what exactly it is that we're looking for.
Well, uh, I think if Erin has. Started that rolling, and let's see what we find out.
And then also with the. Everyone's wall, if you save it. And we decide not to go that direction. So Taylor, we're okay, we're okay with that one, that contract.
Well, if you make a payment, that's saying that you are in agreement to that contract.
Well, I, and I don't know, I'm not saying that. I don't know what you talked, asked the state board of accounts, it was, if it was just that question. I think there's potentially a distinction between, you know, just the contract, like if I say, hey, I'm going to sell you all this computer equipment, hey, I need this money for it. And then council doesn't fund it, alright, we're just null and void, I don't get to sue you to, for the difference, you know, when I could have made somewhere else. Here, there's actually been work, you know, done, how much work, we, whatever, we can, we can argue about, well, you can, uh. So again, I don't know what your contract, contact was with state board of accounts, but that would be my only. Concern on a distinction between, it's just, hey, it's just a contract, it's null and void if you'll fund it, versus say, there's now been. Progress, work done on it, where the argument is that you shouldn't have done the work that you did.
Let's see what. Okay, uh, soil and water, I got our support for the Big Shawnee watershed.
This is what Lori came to talk about last week, or last time, wasn't it? Get the whistle last week, it was.
I'll make a motion to.
I second that.
Agree with the letter of support.
Okay, we have, uh, Ron here from Wega, give us a report. So the report I handed out is a draft, uh, we're presenting it again, um, on the seventeenth to the commissioners. And then at the end of June, we intend to. Submit an official report, which will complete our year-end efforts. We signed a contract last July, so that will complete a full year working for economic development in the county. So just, uh, I'll read through it briefly, um, stop, if you have questions. But, um, we participated in the comprehensive plan, which was, uh, actually set up before we joined, um, but we just. Helped the commissioners and the consultants. Uh, we also participated in the regional housing study, which was contracted by the Greater Lafayette Region. With Ready One, and, uh, we contributed information and, and helped those consultants through the process of. Analyzing, uh, housing within the county. Uh, we helped with the coordinator, the Ready Two initiative, uh, and regional collaboration. Um, to be quite honest, that was probably forty, fifty percent of what we did, it was quite programmed, so. Um, just a little background on that, Ready Two is, um, a grant program initiated by the I D C, Indian Economic Development Corporation. They were, uh, given five hundred million from the, uh, state legislature. And they ran a program to, uh, provide grants throughout the state, and each. Area, showing their region, so you join your region, uh, similar to Ready One. This particular one had seven counties, though, Ready One had six, this was. This was a state program and ready one was a federal program, so they don't really, uh, mix. Uh, this ready two process started right after we. Uh, achieved our contract, so we were front of the deep end. Um, so some of the things we needed to do was develop a housing strategy, a childcare strategy, and all those things that. People that have been working in that economic development through the county would have had already. So we just sort of kicked it in kind of year and, um, started work on that as quickly as we could.
I got a question, I got a question about that. Um, do you know how you broke down the award? For the county?
That's later.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Sure.
Uh, I'm just talking about our participation, and then, um, the way that worked is we met in Lafayette with the other counties and. Uh, the leader of ready two went through us, it went through the local economic development organization, so we each kind of had one. And that's one of the reasons why we wanted to, uh, step up and become countywide, because we didn't have any representation. So we discovered that in ready one, and this helped solve that. Um, so this was. Multiple meetings a week, uh, then every month we would come together and vote, and the voting included, uh, elected officials as well, so. Uh, if you were a city mayor, you could participate, and then one represented the commission, so that's just how they set it up. Okay, um, and then we are holding a job fair that's coming up after this week, so please spread the word. Uh, we're working with, uh, Work One, it's a result of our tour through the county with the manufacturers. And we discovered they're having trouble finding employees, uh, and then also Quater Oaks closed in Danville. And so Work One stepped up, uh, to organize this, so there will be twenty-nine now employers. At the job fair, and we're holding it in the annex building. That's this Wednesday, nine AM through the thirteenth. Um, housing, so housing, um, weirded by housing in Athens before we started in, uh, the county, but as we went through the housing study, we realized, oh, it's a problem everywhere. Uh, and the state has recognized that as well, so what came out of the study is, uh, we've really not had enough investment in housing. Over the last probably fifty years, uh, it's really low investment. And, uh, we believe, based on the housing study analysis, that that's probably why we're, our demographics are shifting. Uh, does, you know, if you don't have housing, rent housing, then people can't move in and, and stay and, you know, children grow up and so forth, so. Uh, that's one thing that we recognize is a priority, just because it's a basic, um, and it's something that we concentrate a lot of effort on. Uh, we developed some targets, uh, countywide, if you're interested, we can share that. We basically just took each town, uh, based on historic data and added eight percent, four percent, two percent, et cetera. And trying to figure out what that would mean in terms of overall housing count. Uh, the study did address, we needed an additional a hundred and eighty houses just to replace housing that was, uh. You know, falling out of commission, um, and that's a normal cycle that we're just not picking up. Um, and that's probably due to the number of home builders in the area, the number of developers that are willing to invest and so forth, so we've been working on that. Uh, we also coordinated with private landowners and developers to identify opportunities. This isn't science, it's better than art, so, um, we're really not sure what's coming out of it. I would say that there's probably three potential projects. Um, where the landowners decide that they would like to participate, and it's close enough to, uh, an urban area, or sometimes in an urban area that, um. We think we can get a builder to come in and, um, you know, strike a deal. Uh, these are private deals with private landowners, so we could, all we can do is facilitate it. And if they choose to, you look great, if they choose not, obviously their fault. Um, and then.
Yeah. So the state works with these developers, the IDC, how does that work, bit of private?
No, they don't. Uh, so I'll get to the ready two grant, I think you're combining those two. The ready two grant is, um, some incentive I'm getting to help developers, and I'll give that a minute, but this is just us working with local, um. Landowners and builders to see if we can, you know, get houses started.
At their own expense?
Yes.
So you just ask people to sell their land to developers, a little passive?
Right.
That people pay for with their own money?
Correct.
Why does that need to be done?
Because we need housing. So this helps our economic development.
Right, but, uh, uh, free market will determine what I need, right? If there are people who want to buy houses, then some people build them, because they need money to do it.
Yeah, but there's, there, there's no investment. So there's no free market happening.
So that developer in Crawford's Village built those two houses over on Stringtown Road?
Yeah.
Was that part of this?
No, he was, uh, operating the building start. So we are, uh, instead, we're trying to help the process along by connecting the dots, so.
So that development up north of town, he's part of that? With Brad Crane and the behind the.
That started before we came in as well.
Okay, uh, there's another one, isn't there another development out?
Yes. I've never had any ventures of never developed, going to Petersburg.
Um, we got, we part of that thirty-six.
You know, with the marble hall, called the marble hall?
Called Maple.
I don't know what's.
Sugar Maple.
All my life.
Right.
Marble Hall.
That's, that's marble hall.
That, that hasn't happened, the land's really in production.
I know that, and I know one of the things, if it's correct. I don't suppose there's development already going down that road, through the cemetery, often riding that path.
Yeah, they're buying houses by Ratcliffe.
But my understanding is that land, uh, will be altered or has already been. And so are the others, my friend is, do you have any connection with Rod?
With who?
The, the developer?
Ratcliffe.
Ratcliffe. Uh, we've had some conversations with him, he doesn't, he's willing to come in and look at opportunities, but, um, he's not asked for our assistance, so. He has not asked for our assistance, so we're not participating with them until the opportunity arrives.
Uh, Rod, can I ask a question, maybe I down the line here a little bit? I think I'll just wait till you get to downtown.
Yeah, I think the grants are probably where we could address all this, uh, but I'm trying to understand what you were asking, I mean.
Well, I'm not exactly sure what we need you for, but I'm, I'm behind Maple.
Well, I'm sitting here trying to figure out, let's, let's.
Right, because if he.
Right, so, um, the demographics are showing, and we had a study out of, uh, Kell's rule business, that, uh, if the current trends continue. The population drops by thirty percent, it's an estimate, by thirty percent, uh, by twenty to thirty. And so if you're seeing a trend, uh, and.
In town now.
In town, sounds.
I find that hard to believe.
Well, I didn't.
People are moving here, Pedro's.
They're not, actually, they're not, definitely look at the photographs.
So the three developments, you're telling no one's buying, I believe one of those just sold down there, it's spin on the interstate. Only bought a hundred and. No, I'm just wondering why these things wouldn't just sort themselves out, so is the county paying for this, or is this studying?
Yes.
That seems quiet. And again, I'm sorry, I'm so behind Maple, I know.
So let me explain.
But I just think questions should be asked.
No, no problem, um, every county in the state has a known development group, except for last year, two counties, that county was one.
Oh, that is why we live here.
Well, okay, let me continue. So on the, uh, the housing, we do have, if you look to the third line. Uh, we helped facilitate Shepherd's Landing development, which is eighty-seven single-family homes in Attica. Uh, we worked with, uh, the Harrisons who own the land, um, they partnered with a housing developer, uh, builder, actually. Out of Lafayette, and so we've helped facilitate that, uh, through planning and et cetera. Uh, the reserve, which is the, a Ratcliffe development over by the cemetery in Covington, we've been working with Brad and Ratcliffe on that. Uh, helping with some incentives we talked about too, uh, in. The ready two portion. Ironman Properties, uh, this is an early development, um, this is the old elementary school in Attica. So that property is becoming available, and the school was concerned about carrying it on its books. And so we stepped in to help if we could, and we did find a developer, which is fantastic, um, they're willing to come in and. Uh, retrofit the building for sixty-seven market-ready apartments and create a community center and a commissary. Uh, the challenge with that one is, we're having some challenges with some of the incentives they're asking for, uh, from the city. And so I'm not sure that's going to happen, but will people. Um, multiple other developments, so. As I said, we do have conversations with private landowners, they're probably three or four of them, uh, considered seriously conservative. But, um, they just kind of come through fruition. Childcare, so childcare is an issue that, uh, the state has. Identified as an issue, um, obviously, the, the county, we discussed this, we, the county doesn't really have a lot of childcare options. And so, um, it's tough enough to crack because we're not going to. Start running childcare, and I don't think you'd want us to, so again, um, it's much like the development side. We try and network and open doors and help people see the opportunities, and it is working, uh, in a very weird way, but. Um, the new one that we did not see coming was British City Church is coming to, um, Attica. They're based in Lafayette, they've had three locations, um, and they're well-funded, and so. They're planning to take the Assembly of God church, which is, as you go up the hill there, going out of town. Uh, they're not going to use it as a church building, they want to retrofit it for a hundred and twelve, um.
So that's no longer gonna be a church?
Well, they're not, they are holding services in it right now, but it's going to be a childcare, so.
Okay.
So what they do is they come to us and they say, well, you know, we want to do this, is there a need? We say, yes, and we explain all that's happening. And then, um, they said, well, you know, this is what we need in terms of funding, and we can provide this amount. There are other grants out there that can help us sort this out, and so we go identify the grants for them, we don't apply. Um, but they're looking at a united way, and they're looking at, um, a, a Lilly grant that's going through the Purdue Center for Rural Development. Um, so they're looking at some of those, they've also reconnected them with Harrison Steel. Because Harrison Steel does not have childcare for their employees, and, uh, they identified that they would like to have it, uh, in some form, and so. It looks like they may be able to provide childcare for the Harrison employees, and there's kind of a nice partnership there.
So can they go after that ready one? Childcare that we had. Allocated money, but nobody ever used it.
Twenty-three thousand, yeah.
Oh.
Okay.
They can't participate in that, but it's not, uh, allocated to one particular group. So, uh, basically you apply, you have seventy seats, you apply, and then you get some funding and training back.
Okay.
And so it gets spread however whoever applies.
We made the lady that, that, uh, works for Fountain County. I don't care, call her name, but, uh, she worked with the ready one childcare. Through the twenty-three thousand dollars we, uh, donated to Ready One. And we never heard from it, and I visited three principals in the county about childcare. And I got not back with the few, but we talked about it here in our meetings. And helped the lady in Crawford'sville, and my question to you, um, how she, how she getting paid? Who pays?
Trying to figure out, who are you talking about?
Well, I think there was the lady that she lived in, got it? And she, um, worked, cause I had talked with that group, and then anybody helped.
Oh, okay, well, you explained mine, no, I'm not sure, um, Kim County Light Works for us, we paid that Kim, but I think it was.
Was it Dawn?
What, Dawn, who works for Community Action.
Correct, so I, yes, you're right, correct. So, but she was supposed to pick up that information. That we got from Ready One, and how the twenty-three thousand dollars was being used. I thought it was gonna go back to the schools, help them in maybe some type of a student childcare program, and that wasn't the case.
As I understand it, Ready One, uh, I was not a part of Ready One, so I had a little rough on that. But as I understand it, um, those were matching funds that went towards the regional goal.
Yeah.
The, and then that would get refunded based on, uh, need and, and, uh, it included training. And then also a certain amount per pupil, but it was a limited fund, so whoever applied first got it. Uh, that's the way I understand it.
So everybody of those, was it nine or seven groups made up that many, one out of two, or the county?
Ready was six, six counties.
Only six? So they all donated. Is it all twenty-three thousand, or was it compared to the population?
No, I think it was just twenty-three thousand, and it was magic funds for ready funds, so they were. Um, usually it's a one-to-one match, sometimes two-to-one, but we got ready grant funds, and then the county matched everything, that's. What it titled, but my understanding.
I was that it was a three-year grant, twenty-three thousand dollars a year, sixty-nine thousand. We didn't pay it the first year, we got an invoice for the second year, so we paid forty-six thousand for the first two years, and I believe the position. It was really more of a.
So.
More of a marketing PR position, scan the environment, see what housing is like in our six counties. What does Fountain County need, what does Montgomery County need, what is Lafayette? But it wasn't to build a facility, and it wasn't to hire a childcare director. Or to do any of those kinds of things, it was more needs assessment, maybe would be a better term.
Needs assessment, and then they did give, I think it's a stamping for some that needed it, it was like a twelve hundred dollars or something, and then there was a limit on that, that's about it.
And what are the response? And they're like, that child. Form of a big icon. That twenty-three thousand dollars, we thought that would be a plus, but I can't, it was raised my next question. And I mean that, uh, have, have you worked in Fountain County, when I see Attica, there's River City, one other twelve cities. When you looked at childcare in Fountain County. Uh, how, how did you go about that, what did you look for?
Well, River City, or River, whatever.
Not them.
They showed up, so I, I didn't pursue them, they just paid the house. Um, and so we are working in Petersburg, because we really have very little south of seventy-four in the county. Um, and we're starting to have conversations with Sterling Church, we haven't got very far. Um, and then we did look at the hub, as you know, um, but we need an operator, we're not an operator, so we need to pair the operator with the facility and. Help them through the process, but.
I talked to, you know who I talked to, I talked to John.
Mm-hmm.
I talked to John about it, because also I talked to Jeff. About childcare, and those were still, I don't know, but I understand it was just communication between the person on it. Wasn't sure she really wanted to do that.
Yeah.
I think that's a big issue, probably.
Yeah, and you would have to upgrade the building, there were some upgrades, and so, um, there's a process of finding the operator, I don't think it's her. You know, someone else, finding the operator, setting up the organization, uh, addressing the building needs, going for grants, I mean, there's a whole process there that.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. So I, I will, I've said this before, childcare is a really challenging thing to solve, but we're continuing to work on that. Um, and then. The next one, the regional business incubator, which thank you, you contributed to, uh, we have, um, the update on that is. For the Wega Building, which is the one that we previously, uh, thank you for, for funding, uh, the business center. Uh, we've completed the interior demo, uh, the reason you haven't seen anything additional happening is we were waiting on two grants for the exterior. Um, and those grants prohibit us from touching the building. It's so strange, but we couldn't touch the building at all until the grants were, uh, received, and we did receive the DNR grant, that's complete. Uh, the landmarks grant, we received it, but haven't gotten through the National Parks Review Service. Uh, which we're hoping to do by the end of the month, so starting in July, we will, uh, start in the exterior of the building, and it will be complete. Um, by probably fall. So the exterior of the building and then the interior, the, uh, first floor is not stable. Uh, we discovered that after we did the interior demo, and so we will have to replace that, and we have funding to do that. Any additional funding for that building would come from ready two. Um, and we're slated to be listed on that, but I'll get to how that works in a minute. Um, and then farm store, we are partially funded for the farm store, so this is the specialty farming market that, uh. Uh, helps support that growth industry, and we are partially funded, but we're not fully funded, the rest of that comes from ready two as well. Um, you'll notice LEI Lily Endowment Inc. Grant, that is the two hundred and fifty million dollars that. That is the two hundred and fifty million dollars that Lilly gave IDC to dovetail with Ready Two. So they have additional funds that they can provide um for specific projects and it's a. It's tied to it, but it's a separate process, which we're in this week, actually, is we're working on that. And um and then the markets, uh which is. You know, the Farm Store is part of the market, but the market is fifteen uh retail units and it's a basically a startup center. Uh providing free access for new retail and food vendors. Um and that doesn't have any funding at the moment, we are fully. Complete on drawings, permissions, uh bids, we hired a contractor, so we are ready to go. Um and we expected that the Ready Two grant money would be available quickly. Um as it turns out, it's not available until this time next year. Um so that's the delay there. The compulsory is part of that elementary school uh project. Uh the developer is willing to set the kitchen aside. Uh for us to use as a policy, uh whenever you sell food products publicly, you have to have. You do your work in a certified kitchen in in a specific way and this product provides that. So if you want to start a food business, we can set you up uh in expensive way and get you going. Okay, and then grants, this is the one I think everyone's interested in. Uh we were able to facilitate four point eight one million dollars in grants this year. They haven't all come in, but um it's looking very good. Uh and that leads to about twenty million dollars in uh private investments, so. Um we'll go through each one. Uh Duke Foundation gave us twenty thousand uh to pay for soft costs, architectural fees for the Wega Building. Um the two I just mentioned previously, the Indiana Landmark, the DNR grant. That's to refurbish the exterior of the historic building. Um and then. The next group have not been awarded, but um they're in process. So ninety thousand dollars that pays for furniture and equipment inside the training center. Um and that's USDA and then Ready One um. Yes, so Ready One, as we discussed, was. Issued prior to us receiving the contract with the county. Uh I was not involved in Ready One because it was a county project as well. Um and we were sitting at the time. But the Covington Sewer Expansion, what we decided to do recently. Um the Shepherd's Landing project that previously received the seven fifty is not ready. And they can't meet the deadlines for that grant. So uh with cooperation from uh Mayor Grant in Attica. Uh Mayor Credit Covington and the developer. Um everyone mutually agreed to move that Ready One grant. From Attica to Covington to help pay for their sewer project, which is underway. Um there are all sorts of restrictions associated with that, so we've got a process for doing it for now. We had to have regional board approval, which we received on Friday. Um and then uh Brad and I are working on uh getting that through the system. Um basically, the timeline is they have to start purchasing products associated with that project. And get reimbursement by September thirtieth. Or they miss it. The uh IDC will take the funding and put them somewhere else. And so that's the reason for that shift. Um in our conversations regarding funding. So. Try and simplify this a little bit, um. The region went through an application process, which we spent months creating. Trying to get seven counties to agree and cities to agree, something else, but. Um essentially, we provided an application for this grant to the IDC. The IDC then awarded in, I think it was April. Uh not in late March, they awarded thirty five billion dollars to the region. And each region got something, so they they kind of ranged between twenty five and forty, they were in that range. And that's how we invited up the funds. Our region includes seven counties, which includes Lafayette, West Lafayette, uh Crawfordsville. And uh universities were included, so Purdue, Wildash, ID ten. Um Purdue had a really large ask in this grant process, like we did in Ready One. Um out of the seventy five million that we asked for, you women did that, but we asked for the full amount. Um they wanted twenty five million, so they wanted a third of the total budget to to work on projects for the chip manufacturing. The plans that they're bringing in from South Korea. Um and in Ready One, they asked for a large amount associated with making the Purdue Airport a uh regional airport. Um and it might be international, I'm not sure, but anyway, uh that included a new terminal. And some other upgrades. So we had some issues there, obviously, we didn't get seventy, but we got thirty five. And so as a region, we had to work through all of these uh demands. In the process of creating the application, each county and city would often. Uh identify the projects that were ready to go, that would meet the criteria of ready. For incentive funding and low and behold, the region came up with over a hundred and fifty million. Of projects incentives and so obviously there was some reading. Out to do and then some challenges with that, so. The way we did it is um we contacted the leadership within each community. And tried to identify those projects that met the KPIs, the the criteria for the grant. And that were ready to go. And part of the grant is you have to have a one to one public match. You have to have a three to one private match. And so we needed to identify not only those projects ready to go uh that met the KPIs, but that were really putting money. And so we created a list and in that list, um I can't remember, but we were well over. Any amount we were going to receive. The nice part of what happened towards the end of the uh negotiations is Purdue reduced their amount to one point four million dollars. Of the thirty five. And then we divided the thirty five by all seven counties. So unlike Ready One, where we got one point, close to one point five million dollars, this time we were awarded uh four point five million dollars.
Wait, let me jump in, so probably not everybody knows this, so. Fountain County, we usually get the leftovers that come out of Lafayette, you know, there was six counties in Ready One, seven in Ready Two. But Rod's work and Brad's work and others in the Wega Board. So where I work, we also serve Vermillion County. It's part of the Wildash Valley region. Their whole region only got five million dollars. So Fountain County is getting four point five million dollars of the ready. That's just in one county where the whole Bygo County, Clay, Sullivan. Park Green, Owen, Vermillion uh only came up with five million dollars total, so when you. Compare yourselves, you know, with others, uh we got our fair share.
We certainly did and I'm extremely proud of that, I worked with Warren County and uh Devon County and Carroll County, we're the most rural in the group. And uh we fought pretty hard for that. Um what that is though, it's not money that comes to the county, I just want to be clear. Ready One did come through the county because it was ARPA dollars, it was COVID dollars and had to go through uh you know, the. Uh leadership that way. But what happens with Ready Two is it comes directly from the IDC to the end user. So it's a contract directly from them to the developer or the city or whoever that entity is. Um what we were doing was preparing uh priorities, recommendations. And then that goes to the regional board, the regional board votes on it, and then it goes to the IDC and the IDC essentially at the very end will decide who they appoint. So we're not really assured just yet. That we're getting the full four point five or that those projects are going to stand. But we are lined up and ready to go and it looks extremely positive.
So from the state, uh. That four point five million. So they direct that to you as a part of the Wega Board, are the Wega.
It doesn't come to us.
Not to you, so where does it go, credit to you said.
No, they sign contracts directly with the end user. The developer, so it could be a developer or a city or whatever, it's directly between them and the end user.
So I'm looking at Attica and Covington and Beatersburg and Kingman and so on, because that's that's what our job is. For economic development, so when I see that direct payment. I'm I'm expecting to see what's going to happen, what we probably could get from that. How can these communities develop from that money or that grant?
Right.
And how far down the road is that plan?
So that's why our job this time around was really important, prepared to Ready One, because Ready One did come through the existing structure of government. But this time around, uh we serve as the clearinghouse and the. Uh and the uh organization that creates these recommendations and fights for dollars for Fountain County. And then, once it's awarded, it is directly between the state agency and the final user. So for instance, let's just go through the list, this will probably make more sense. Covington will get seven fifty, that's Ready One, so it's a different program. Eight hundred thousand in incentives dollars goes to pay for uh sewer streets and utilities. To provide housing in the reserve site, which is developed, which is included between the dock course and this cemetery. And then uh one.
Wait, wait, back up, what was that now? Between, because I'm still looking at your development.
There's a new.
How you're just.
Correct, there's a new development plant. Uh huh. And and the reason why they're on the list is they are able to provide three to one match private money. In as part of their development and fortunately. Covington was spending money on their sewer plant already. So that two point five that they're spending on the sewer plant can be counted towards a public match for. The housing developments in Attica and Covington. And that's just how they let you do it, so I don't have to come back to the county or anybody else and ask for. A match to receive this grant, uh we can use the money that's already being spent in Covington to apply towards Fountain County grants. It's just, I don't know, it's weird, but that's how they do it. And then um on the Shepherd's Landing, we took them out of Ready One, we put them back in Ready Two. Uh that would be eighty seven single family homes and again, it pays for sewers and streets and so forth. And then uh we've got a number in there from the Business Incubator to help finish the Business Incubator. So those are the ones that the. Region agreed to, we had to get everyone's approval. Um we will continue to have conversations and it might be fine tuned. Because obviously Lafayette is not getting the incentives they wanted, et cetera, et cetera. But um by then dividing it equally among the counties, we were able to kind of. Find the priorities and and actually book them back, which is really nice.
Where is the seven fifty Covington Sewer Expansion?
Where is it?
Yeah.
It's it's Ready One dollars.
And where in Covington is that expansion happening?
They're upgrading their system, so I think they're, I don't think.
It's all happening in downtown. Okay, that's not the right word.
They're just upgrading.
Okay, so that should be more upgraded and not.
They're upgrading their system to accommodate more housing and to fix current issues.
Now I understand, okay.
Mostly accommodating the. The reserves, right?
Yep, I understand.
Yeah, I can't say that before, but we don't. So um. The incentive programs are uh somewhat controversial, when I started. Coming up with a strategy for dividing up funds among the uh projects available. Our board, and you can see the list of them below, represents uh their countywide. And so we had a significant number come back and say, well, we don't want to do that, we don't want to give. Money to private developers to build single family homes and there were multiple reasons for it. Um. That was the program that was given to us though, so we either use the money for housing or or we don't. Um and the way it's working, and this is the odd part of the world right now, is that uh there isn't a single. Housing addition going up in Lafayette or Crawfordsville that doesn't have public money in it. It's just how it works and so we we want developers to show up or builders to show up. And contribute and invest in our community, we have to be a part of that process and. We did run into that on Shepherd's Landing, we had a builder that was building in Carroll County. And um I think in Kokomo as well. And we've been working with him for two years and he backed out last minute because we couldn't come up with the same incentives. And so it's just not part of the game I like, but that's. That's what's happening. Um solar, yeah.
A while ago, we mentioned that in order for these communities to be involved in these, ready one or ready two. That the public has to come up with a one to one.
That was a requirement from the IDC.
Mm hmm. And and a three to one with the private. Um. And I'm sure that some of our communities would have a hard time coming up with a one to one, even a three to one.
Right, so what's really nice is if we did have a project ready in Beatersburg, you would have had it. Because you've already spent twelve million on your sewer plant and that would have counted.
You know, I just wondered if they knew this before. See, the bill just came out until one, you'll go, maybe a year and a half.
It came out last summer.
Last summer.
Yeah.
And we didn't know that we had a process. That's the thing that I was concerned because I got a question the other day at a meeting. Uh another person often in the here would like to have the ability to be part of our land. And the amount of money that it could become part of our company, they they were gonna have. It was Kingman, we just put forth four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Kingman County. Put to water there. And also they were, and then back to Attica, so as you were going through this, how much? How much of these this month has Attica procured to help their process? But I see you've been awarded a hundred thousand dollars from the Indiana Landmark, a hundred thousand dollar DNR. Uh I think we gave you five hundred thousand, I think you also got extra money. And and uh so what I'm hearing today is there's one building made in red. Are started by July. Is that right, the building for?
Yeah, the quarter building, the quarter building.
So I, what I'm really asking around is, when I hear some comments from people. I'll start with Beatersburg, at the old stockyard, the guy was was approached about selling the stockyard and he was ready to sell it. My biggest point for the section eight housing. And I don't think that's gonna go, I think when they did this uh. Uh Beatersburg and and Attica, they did with the uh program there with the provisions. They didn't know anything about program, they didn't know about that, they wanna know about section eight housing. Because we have, we're not too in good shape.
Right.
And I think a lot of communities about ourselves are not very good shape. And we're trying to overcome that.
True.
And so when I hear housing. I go, why don't we work in infrastructure? Because if we got housing, we think those people are gonna go. Gonna Covington, go to that, go to Crawfordville, go to Danville, go buy what they need. They're not gonna be spending it here and I can't understand why we don't go for infrastructure to try to build that.
So.
I have no stop, you know.
It is, but Kingman I think probably needs a little more infrastructure, but you know.
Yeah, they had a corporate.
Do they, I had seven or fifty. Um but Beatersburg's doing really well, I think, you know, um if one or two of those projects start for single family homes. Um you're ready. You're ready to go because you've got the new sewer system and and you're doing extremely well, you've got. You you own the power system, uh I think you've got. Fiber now or you're getting fiber?
Getting.
Yeah. So I think they're gonna be in great shape, Newtown a lot just got fiber uh or it's coming. And so that will open up a whole new world for them, because that was the only thing really holding them back. Um I think, let me get to the next part, because I think I can address your question. Solar, I'm just gonna skip skip over it, we don't have a position on solar because the county was already decided. And we're gonna follow what the county wants to do. I will say that we have had a lot of meetings with GNX associated with protecting Attica's growth. Uh because they are adjacent forty one and twenty eight, which are the growth corridors for Attica and they've been working, which is nice. Um. Uh the organization, you can see there who is on the board. Um and uh we do have a couple members changing uh starting probably in August. Um supervisor of schools for Southeast Fountain will uh enter one year and um. Nicole from Covington will take her place. Uh Brenda at the end of the year uh will be replaced by one of the commissioners. And then it's up to you, uh if you want to keep Jeff on or if you want to replace Jeff. Uh these seats are all one year term. Um I think you can read through the rest of this. Wouldn't need to elaborate. Um I think you can read through the rest of this. I wouldn't need to elaborate. But the one thing that's not on there, and this is a draft, it will will be a little better on the next one. But the one thing that's not on here is growth planning. So um we were able to talk, I can legally accomplish it, but we were able to talk. The Purdue Research Foundation into paying for a regional growth planning effort. So they're going to hire consultants. To um come work with each county to identify the status of the schools. Transportation, um utilities, um zoning ordinances, essentially, they will have a list. Of things that they wanna work with you on. And what's beautiful about this is we are now going to be on a regional map. Showing our assets, um so that when they bring in um S B Heinecks. Which is a massive investment in chip manufacturing for um they are. The chief chip manufacturer uh providing memberships to um Nvidia. Um and it's a big investment, but it's not just that investment, it's what comes after that. All the supply chain people, sometimes the supply chain people need to be matched to the manufacturers, sometimes they need to be in Beatersburg. And the gold certified, you know, industrial site. Yes, yes. And so you're right, you're absolutely right. So what's really nice about that is it will put us in the mix. Um and it'll put us on the map. For instance, we can. Potentially build a thousand houses around the dock horse and Attica on the existing water and sewer system. I mean, that's insane. Somebody did some planning. So the ability for that to happen and to be on a list for. Uh developers or builders or whoever to come in and do that is an awesome opportunity. Um and they are paid for it. They're gonna pay for it out of the one point four ready funding. And um they're going to probably come and talk to you or talk to county officials and mayors and so forth. Um they may not do it, it might be the consultants. But then what I'd like to do, if with everyone's permission, probably it'll be finished around September. Uh I'd like to come back and hold public meetings, much like we did on comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan just kind of skimmed the surface though. I'd like to then have public meetings and get public input on how do one see their communities grow. And what kind of things we should be investing in. Um and then that'll allow me to speak into the regional map that they're creating. We've never had this. Uh and it, believe me, it's tough to get in the room with Lafayette and Purdue, right? So ready opened those doors for us and it's a nice opportunity. That's all I think. Oh, it's West Lafayette over on the. North town in the research park.
Quick timer question, I'm probably just not looking at the right places, but. I've heard about the job fair twice and that was commissioners meeting in here. So I'm curious how it's being advertised, if it's this week.
It was in the newspaper, um.
Social media.
Six, uh social media, and then we we send out emails to our mailing.
Uh Sarah, um one thing on housing that depends so much on me is uh I kind of. Was on a school war for years and what I've seen with the three schools is uh decline in in real. With that, you have decline in running, it follows and child children, so again, add decline and. Keeping schools up, getting uh good teachers uh and retaining them. With their salaries and we're not working on section eight house. But. That superintendent and the boards of the school are very concerned about uh population, student population and. You know, quality housing, people that come from Lafayette or wherever uh helps that out, especially Attica. Because they're they're down to four hundred kids, five hundred kids, and that's kind of what. Stimulated me to look at housing to help school corporations out post. They're just, they're just small and we need, we need students.
My understanding is that um I I think somewhere between fifty one to fifty five percent of the Indiana state budget. Goes to education, which I'm sure is an incredibly large number, but it equals about eleven thousand dollars. For a student, am I in the ballpark?
Yes, it's seven. Six thousand dollars. Now it's higher now.
So a lot higher. Um but I don't, I mean. I don't think there is a problem with education funding in this state. I mean, I. Again, I don't have all the numbers. I just, and I understand what you're, I I don't see what you're saying. I think that what um and I'm just gonna say this generally because I'm harassing all of you and you worked very hard and sorry. But I've started, I've become involved in this process. You guys know I'm due to attending these and this solar thing was abrupt and all of that, but. Um I do know something about the government and. I think every time I hear grant or matching or. I hear, I see, I see my money, I see your money, I see taxpayer money. You talk about it like it's some magical. Fun and you know, we have to spend it or lose it. Well, as conservatives, I feel like. At some point, when do we address like the larger issue, which is that we are taking money for people in this state? And the I E D C, this is just one example, a recent one, um. Those are not elected officials, am I correct?
Well, the the board is.
Okay, so the governor has a bunch of people who aren't elected, who decide which developers get money. Who is savvy enough to apply for the grant? I mean, I can go on, you can go on and on, you can see where this is going, like. The hard job is to look at it not in a, how do I get my grab? But how do I make this entire system better? And I feel like you, the point you made, which is that. Cut found county being the only county that. I I see that as a good thing. I see found county, I mean, I have seen it until I sort of found out what was going on. As sort of this, this oasis of. You know, independence and freedom and liberty from overarching and overreaching government, which I think is a good thing. And I think there's a second side to the upside of, you know, economic development, break people and build more. When in actuality, people are looking for space, right? I want someone to leave me alone in in my small oasis that I've got here. And I think there are lots and lots of other people who feel the same way. So that's just my perspective.
The one thing, one thing that happens is if everybody leaves you alone, then you'll lose your gas station. Then you'll lose your restaurant store and then you're gonna lose your.
That's where.
In the world that I work in, which is non-for-profit giving, uh. There's a hunger for quality amenities in communities. And so what. Rod's team and I think our county can't speak for the commissioners or the county, but they're trying to. Flush out uh the best of the best. I don't think, we don't have the resources to go after every. Opportunity that comes across our plate, but I think our challenge is in limited resources. What is the best use of anybody's particular time? To do the best for the county that we can. Now, everybody can disagree on, well, I think that should be ranked number four. I think it should be two, and somebody thinks it should be ten, and somebody says, oh, I'm gonna move out of the county if you do that. But I think the goal of Rod and us is to get our arms around everything, everything, help enough people provide us with input. So that to some degree that we're all moving in a similar direction and that everybody can be heard, that we don't always get. What we want. Sometimes we win, sometimes we lose.
But I don't think the gas station, the Marathon down there, owned by whoever lives in, um whoever those people are. That's not going, that's not going where because we, because there's a market.
There's not a market for Maple Corner anymore. There's there's other businesses like that, that I think uh we forget about. We we think about the urgent today, but we forget about, oh, just speaking Covington, the. It's a restaurant that's now a tattoo shop and I think about Maple Corner that's that's no longer there and all of our communities have these types of things. But we forget and our population is ten percent less than what it was ten years ago. And so we're having less people to support the things that we think are valuable. But eventually those will close a post office in Wallace, you know, no longer there, no gas stations.
On the downside, I mean, I am the, you're, you're, that's the wrong, the wrong industry to talk about because. I moved my business to Baton Rouge and on my dime, I without taking out any loans, I built a commercial vision. And I had a successful business and Stephanie lowered her for me and then she opened up. Really nice restaurant that is very successful and that is supported by this community. And that's what I'm talking about. The market deciding what we need. If people of this county want a service and I. And I'm sorry, that's why, that's why I focused on pause and pause, because. I'm, I have animals, I have huge, I have livestock, you know, all of that. And I would support pause and pause with my money. I would write them a check for nine thousand dollars if they came to me and they said. We would, I, we need this and here's what we needed for, and if I got more of my money back. If we all got some of our money back, imagine what we could do. It's why the church works so well. We all go to church. And we give our money to our church so that they can decide, you know, where that money goes. And it's a giant pot of money. Right? We all do generously.
Churches are closing.
And we, okay, that's a different cultural.
We could go on all day, but I'm just saying, because we have to be either or, I think maybe we think both.
The church is closing influences how many kids go to your school. Because families aren't having kids anymore, so we don't even address that issue. Like, why aren't, why are. I'll go bigger. Why are more people infertile? Why are, okay, we could just go on and on. But we're starting just with like, how are we gonna spend all this money? And not addressing the larger cultural issues in this case.
So my my thought is. Why not get some of your tax money back to this county? And the way, and the way to do that is through the grant money that.
No, because first I have to pay the state to get the grant money. Right? It's a whole one living.
That's a bigger, that's all that we can control.
You gotta acknowledge the problem. Right? You can't, you can't just be a blind participant. At least when you guys vote on this and you accept this money, you understand where it's coming from.
We don't get a vote on that, I mean, this four point five, that's my question is, who decides? On this four point five million dollars, who recommends to the I E D C? I mean, I see two million dollars for that building in Attica. What revenue are we getting for that kind of money? And public thinks thinks that we are the ones making that decision.
No, you're not.
We know.
That's the problem because there are. Okay, so the public's curious with us about Maple Corner money. Putting that kind of money in it. And now I'm already getting calls, why are you putting two million dollars into the Attica building?
You're not.
And you are putting, they think we are.
No, the state is.
No, I know, but.
How did the.
Perception.
Board.
Right, so.
Your board decided what amounts went to what.
That's not the one to one.
No, there is a one to one for uh a public or a uh nonprofit building, that had one to one. But that is being matched by other grant dollars and putting the city's financials on the streets. So there's no additional money.
Wait, so a nonprofit, which would be tax exempt. Gets. Gets state money, which is then matched by our public. Is that what you're saying?
No, this this particular one's not match. We don't match this one.
So we, you know, it is odd, but.
You've said odd and weird too many times and that is a serious complaint for me.
Well, you're, you're just going out of. Uh they do not require the public to provide cash in all sorts of circumstances, although sometimes they do. But there are communities that do that. Um you can use money that's already spent within that window, within your community as leverage. So. Right, but it's just a, it's just saying, we've already invested this much here.
But all grants are not tax money. We could, the Lilly Endowment is putting two hundred and fifty million dollars and so we just made a.
Which they would do, and that's true, they should. That's how they spend their all.
It's not all our, it's not all our money. There's other duty foundations and others are putting money. A lot of private though.
So the way, the way the uh the business incubator is working, it's quite an investment, there's a lot there. Um but it's multiple grant sources and there are some private, there there's some public. Um and this particular ready grant is state money, so the state has it available, it fits the K P I. It it does what they wanna do throughout the state and so we're applying, that's it.
And by state money, you're talking about all of our money.
Right. Oh, we did that, we did that, but but you know, I don't control the system, you don't control the system, so. I don't understand what we're accomplishing by this.
But the two million dollars, that was put in for roads.
Southern County, right? Did you, this is our southern thirteen county. You never had anything to do with it. I'm just standing there because I wanted to address when I know Lindy's and all that are gone, but it's not because restaurant won't go in there. Because Benjamins, I know, wanted to buy that so a restaurant wouldn't be decimated.
Understand that, understand.
And Maple Corner, that has been an issue for years and years and years, you know. And Vicaries left, that was an unfortunate circumstance with the family. I've been in business for twenty one years, actually longer, with other shit I've had. And we've been fine. So I don't think we're losing stuff and I do like to live along too where I'm living. We live in the country for a reason.
Right.
You know.
There's, we're not doing anything that's.
We're trying to live long, but the people on Stringtown was left along too, it's a rat lift start, it's whatever, eighty. Right now you don't. But anyway, that, I mean, if you say, go everywhere. So if that's what we want. That's what I'll get.
I'm my only concern.
Uh just for public knowledge, we are not working in the countryside on housing, right? It's all associated with current urban areas.
I have a concern with the cost of these homes. Are these supposed to be? Mid-priced homes, low-priced homes?
It depends on the developer, so we don't control that. Um when they get into an assignment agreement for these incentive dollars. Uh the state has some input or that the I E D C has some input. We can also have some input. Um for the most part, these guys are really working with us, so it's not an antagonistic relationship at all. Um I know for the Harrison group um and the Lachus group in Attica, we asked them to do starter homes. And starter homes, when they started the process two years ago, was around uh two fifty, two seventy five. And now they're around three twenty five. So it's uh not anything they can control either. Um I will say though, if you look at the housing study, it shows that we have a big gap. Um in the the three fifty to four thirty range. And you wouldn't think that. But based on the study, that's what's not getting built. So people that can afford that don't have the opportunity to buy those. Which, you know, tightens up the lower end of the market as well, so.
I I can remember when Harrison's, I remember my parents talking about when Harrison's did this once before. In what, the early sixties, late fifty, early sixties? And they built two, one housing project out by the Attica High School. Those were national homes.
Yeah.
Built in Lafayette, brought down in pieces down here because they needed to provide homes. Because they needed to provide homes for workers, they were getting out of the coal mines. And so this is kind of the same concept, only it's not, we're not going and getting those employees. We're building homes to entice people to move, because Harrison's is, has a shortfall right now with employment.
They all.
Dudley knows this from the industry in which he works, so I think the idea is that. Build it and they will come, kind of concept, so. I, I think it's a good idea. Because there are people that wanna move to smaller communities and so, um. For the same reason that you like living in the country, they want a smaller community and a smaller school system, so.
So there are a couple anecdotes I can add to that, um, all of the school, maybe not Covington, but. Uh, Attica and Fountain Central, they have trouble attracting teachers, cause there's really nowhere to live. And so one of the issues, they also would prefer apartments, because a lot of times the teachers will move temporarily. Uh, and then eventually grab you, and you don't really have apartment opportunities either at the moment.
And I can say that the Iron Man properties is not section eight housing. I don't want anyone to think or spread that rumor, because that is not what it is, and I know this for a fact. My brother-in-law is the mayor and he has told me it is not section eight housing, he does not want that rumor to get started. That, that is not what it is.
Yeah. Um, and then also, I think the most.
Not that there's anything wrong with that, but.
And part of the reason why we don't have, uh, you know, kids in the school, you know, I think Attica is right, five oh. Seven and at five hundred, they couldn't pay the bills, you know, it's one of those situations. Um, and also because we're seeing some kids, look at the demographics, and every community's facing it, it's not just us. But there's a bubble in the age women and, or the ages and as they fade through the system. They need a, a far fewer population, I mean, where do the kids go? It's one thing to put kids in the school, but are they sticking around? Do they have the ability to get an apartment, to buy a house, to become a part of the community? That's the challenge that we're facing, because right now it's not looking that well.
And I know for a fact that college kids, when they do their internships, I know this for a fact, because I've had. Friends of my sons who have asked, where can I rent an apartment in Attica, cause I'm working for Siri Solutions for the summer and I have no place to live. So, there is a need.
It's a, well, it's a very common need.
Yes.
Well, that was a long report, sorry about that.
Jeff, wanna read a report on that? Rick, me, this person, I, Aaron and Kelly. Met and we went up and looked at the room that Sentry did put on, seems like it was about seven years ago. Uh, it was worn until point thirty one. And, uh, so we went out and looked at it, so I'm gonna read what I wrote down. Uh, looked at leaks inside, including corporates, the full unit. We looked at leaks inside the building, including courtroom doors and clerks. It's peeling back mural in place, we also looked at leak, leak in a aisle, even in a corner. Above the door and then we went over the roof. The roof appeared pretty good shape, it connected well at joints. Uh, with a handful, handful of patches. Um, but not as much, many as I thought, right Kelly?
Right.
We didn't think there was.
All seams were intact, yeah.
Uh, they were, all seams were intact, at the chimney, there was cracks in the wall. And flashing was good, uh, we, we think, we're things, uh. That, uh, water's coming down the chimney and, uh. Uh, fingering out into the walls, even into the wall, but see, it needs, uh, to come down this, at least a circle, uh, well. Um, and cap, so I guess what we're taught, saying is from the boiler, take a fluid pipe up. And do away with the chimney, cause chimney's taking all of it, okay, and then cap. Um. We, uh, I told you, Rick was twenty thirty one. Looked at drainage vents that drain water off the roof. And a couple are open, so, and they're, they're not recessed in, they're high, so they need to be capped. Rainwater, I don't know if anybody knew this, it's rainwater, I didn't see any gutters around the edge. It goes into a, into drainage that goes through the building and out. Correct, that's what we, Rick, they go through the buildings and drain water.
Yeah, see, we got those beds we left down. It's built nineteen thirty six, it's hard to believe, we've not been in those beds. I called the heating guy about two hours ago. We need to get somebody to handle it, and look in the ventilation system and see if there's anything called the. I keep all unknown, it's just air tanks. We had to set up five years to take the stack down. And, uh, the lady commissioner, it's really, don't want to go, she called the hall. When we had a contract with this. We looked at the chimney last, uh, two weeks ago, it's all windows. Nobody wants to take a damn thing, I catch all the heat, we got a wheelchair lift down, we got an elevator down. We want like five years, fix anything, I just catch everything. You know, I do the best I can, I don't think we need, that makes the owner's a joke. We do not need an elevator, we don't need it, period, you look inside out, I'm just my opinion. They'll be new place right after jail, but they should have done a startup, that might be one. But we better get on this building, they've given thousands and thousands of dollars away to different things, we better worry about what we got to be.
Now, the elevator's barely new.
Yeah, well, I saw it there, at the time of the commissioners, we should have fixed new doors, we got original doors, trying to.
And work it, they, I think they're, the historical society and it was behind that, you didn't want us to change.
Now, how can this building still be in the historical thing, well, we've done all new lighting. And there's a lot more to be done, I don't understand anything. But I think people need to go, everybody, look Maple Corner inside now. And a lot of these people don't know anything about this. I can take you, turn around this inside. But it is, they're struggling to be good, when they say it's falling in, that's bull crap. I've been worried about this building.
The chimney needs to come down. Crane was on his way.
Well, they were in, he was here in Covington.
Yeah.
With the crane, so.
And Scott Williams was our heating guy, very good, very good. And the lady come down and boiler room, and it all was up. Then he basically told her what the hell it's got, and then that's when they got ready to hit, they got ready.
So what can we do?
Well, uh, commissioners need to, they say they're gonna, they want the, chimney to come down, we'll find the funding for it, as a.
So I called the Reynolds this morning, we're gonna come down Wednesday, look at what we can do, then we watch everyone for. You know, Scott's something got to be done, cause the water's coming in.
Brandon Reynolds.
See about the cameras and.
Yeah, so he wants to see what he can do, they'll do the piping, then we have to find somebody to stack down. We wanna do it now, sometime, I don't care, it wouldn't work. They've been, I wanna say the word, it's put around this, all five security.
People complained about the elevator because they want to come up, that's where it's scary, the elevator.
Yeah, because it's got the original doors in nineteen thirty six on it, now twenty one new elevator.
Well, I didn't know how to.
But right now, we're just trying to find a park with three hundred and thirty six, a company guy five minutes ago, trying to find a magnet for the door. Our security guard.
Time.
That, that door, we're calling them, T K wanted seven thousand dollars to put the thing in, build that a pound of weight.
Yeah, I remember seeing that.
But we're putting two new locks on the wheelchair lift, is that sixty, seven hundred dollars to do that?
That's coding.
That's coding.
How they contacted you, I got an email from the judge and it's messing with the court.
Yeah, well, there's, there's not a heck of a lot I can do, you know, when the parks get here. But hopefully they can find that part for this elevator this week. Because it's the original route. I was super good, and what we could do, we don't. So, I, I just think, you know, I need some focus on this.
Dudley, uh, but the rainwater kinda concerned me, because it's going down through the building.
And those are, and those are steel pipes.
Six pipes, so one of us, we're gonna have a mess.
Well, just look down, uh, Gina's bathroom, one ground floor, it was three months ago, we had a leak. So I said, I guess we'll turn the scene down, so we had, they paid twenty five hundred dollars, thank you, guys commanded to take that stuff down. And luckily, AJ Lewis came over, the same steel pipe, it's in the building. It was, you could put your hand completely through that pipe. So if you got a hole in one pipe, if you got a fault back there, it would be doing this, it would be doing this. It's not gonna be cheap, I mentioned it, Tim, and I'll do it again, you know, whatever.
That's gotta be fixed.
But, you know, I, I used, I just, you know.
There's, there's a, a drainage issue in the basement, uh, Rick said that. When you walk in the back of it, there, if it, if it rains real hard, there's water, it, uh, it's in there and then there's a wooden roof.
Oh, yeah.
The wooden roof that's getting rotten, um. So that was kind of what we saw.
When it poured down rain, before they put the roof on, before saying, I'm going back. When we put the roof on five security, they had buckets, five down buckets for years, which were the roof. We had inmates in the elevator, raining and it was pouring down on one end of the elevator. And the second floor, the light on this side rain was pouring. So yes, they just keep putting it off and putting it off.
I did, I also would have had windows, doors and A D A and space, it's kind of what the issues are here. That's, that's what was on it.
So Aaron, have you heard of this? Oh, I know, I know, I know.
But Tom, it's, it's gonna be some bucks.
Yeah.
Getting this rehab.
Well, we're gonna take care of it, but, you know, like, we talked another time, we got a garage and, and we.
Yeah.
We'll do the annex, we got a garage, and we could, and I, I think we could start doing some of this stuff, let's start out there. Let's get rid of the water problem, then we can, you know.
If you want, you want, that's all we need to do.
Well, let us know what, and find out about the chimney and.
Oh, each other wants to, we'll try to get a hold of some contracts.
Okay, follow me, email us.
Thank you, Rick.
Yeah, thank you very much, Rick, for all you do. Uh, Tom, you wanna talk about cyber security?
I had, I'm sure, a little bit, although it's not a little tough reading here. I attended this conference over at Williamsport, the Indiana, uh, local government cybersecurity. Set the program, they're going to go stay doing program, where they just have to show up in the audience. In the Williamsport, uh, this I O D, the Indiana Office of Technology is partnering with. Purdue University and Indiana University on this cyber track program. And, uh, and the reason why I attended is I wanted to find out why we're being attacked. And the reason, not the reason for me, that my wife was in the hospital over in Indiana. And they were attacked. And when they were attacked, she said she couldn't believe it, all the scurrying that was going on. Everybody had to go to the old method of writing everything down, so can you abandon the medication, the nurses? It's with the old man, well, anyway, I know you guys are not, you're, you're pretty to help the cyber attacks and we have to pay money to get out of it. And so what I found out in this, there's a lot of reading from county members. Our point of interest is helping Indiana county protect themselves against cyber attacks. Which can affect not only the courthouse, our government, but our school, and the county, our fire protection. Our hospitals are transportation. Our medical, okay, our special services within our towns and our cities and our county. There's quite a bit of discussion, as you read through there, I think that you will run across a lot of information. How each individual little penalty can be helped, there's some free material out there. I think the biggest thing is, is communication. I will say this, and I have read, I talked to Brad before I came here last week. And Brad has assured me, there's a lot of technical stuff, but Brad has assured me that discount is in good shape. Discount is in good shape, we paid for that, and that came up with getting the bet, it's through the computer programs, so on. But we're, we already have been fed, he had all the information that he had. Uh, there is extended bill, uh, one fifty, artificial intelligence and cybersecurity. That's a big one, you can get back on your computer and look into the depth of that. But if you read that bill, what you're trying to do is allow our small towns to become involved in cybersecurity. Uh, so here today, don't you think, what I've heard today here in our group, this is government. To me, this is government, but everybody's. I wanna say one other thing that I think that we've, uh, we have become a fountain county dot Indiana. You know, we all have that information, that is authentication. Indicator and recognition for cybersecurity, that's a whole thing. And as you will, I don't have, so read it, and I told Brad. And there's so many other things I would mention, but I'm not gonna mention, because I think some of this is not supposed to be out there, so to speak. And not talked about, uh, as much, but anyway, I'm not trying to hide anything. But I'm just saying that I think some of this is totally infected. That's why I'm trying to read it, read about it, and I think you'll find some interesting information, and I appreciate your time, thank you so much.
Uh, so I sent you guys a email, I think about a week or two ago, about the program we're looking at. Uh, Josh, uh, Woodington, I have been overseeing, we do enough supply and ordering and that. And we come across, uh, this program called New Capit, and it's basically, to make it sound easy, is it's basically a vending machine. For medical supplies, so what this does is total control, uh, inventory control helps with ordering and that. Basically, each individual employee would go in, enter their code, and they would enter a code of what product they needed and wanted. Um, this helps with inventory, with, you know, you know, like if we see one individual taking. Ten non-rebreathers and they don't need it, we can control that and find out, why didn't you take that in here, whatever. Um, it is a lease program, I will say that, but we looked at, the only way we looked at it is, is. How can we, how can it be done where we're not having to pay out anything for it? Uh, so we looked at what we purchased in medical supplies and medications throughout the year. And with what we, the volume we buy, they, this company, Bount, we looked at and said, we will allow you to have these devices. Regardless of what you bought, on a cost wise. Uh, so what we're looking at is, uh, we're looking at a vending machine and a locker for Beersburg. It's a vending machine for Attica, uh, it is a five-year lease. Uh, we looked at our numbers, Josh and I ran our numbers, so looking at what we pay, we pay out in medical supplies. Uh, we are going to hit that number or it will not be a cost, um, to the county at all. Sliding contract that we're gonna utilize these devices. Um, to the county at all. It's not in contract that we're going to utilize these devices. Um, and with the, as I've been telling you guys, with the market right now of medicals, and we see it with everything else, but. Medical supplies are uncertain right now with the pricing. Uh, most of your industry, most of your companies are doing a three to five percent increase twice a year, at least once and not twice a year. So the price of medical supplies is going up. So with that, what we buy, we're going to get that, that numbers to be able to utilize these devices.
For both machines?
Yeah.
And locker?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes. So what I'm looking at is I brought this to the county commissioners for their approval, and then obviously the. The attorney's looking at the agreement to make sure it's all, you know, good. I want to bring your guys' attention. Your blessing that you can move on with it as a lease program. There's not. We stay within that number, and we've ran the numbers for the last three to five years, we're at that number. And we hope to see that there's not going to be any decrease, but our run numbers are up. Uh, the cost of medical supplies is going up, so we're going to that number. So we feel that there will not be any out hot pay for those, using those devices.
So what prompted this?
We've actually been looking at this, um, four, five years ago. Uh, it gives a little better control. Uh, inventory control, it also helps with ordering. So, you know, um, if a product gets low, we get notification and it's low. It'll prompt us to order it and have it, and we don't run out of it. Um, and. Controls a little bit to where. We're out of our stock. Probably the biggest thing is trying to control the stock, the stock goes on the trucks, want those out. Um, and they tell you that some of the organizations that went with this, they've seen between a twenty to thirty percent. Cost savings. Uh, I think a lot of those are market businesses, where there's a lot of. You know.
I know.
Hands in it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Josh and I looked at the numbers. I don't see us getting that twenty to thirty percent. Maybe a five percent, but I think the thing we look at is, is. The, the ordering, because it will give us that. We can control. We can enter everything that's in the medical supply room into the system, so we'll know what's been downloaded from the supply room into the vending machine. Uh, we'll know what goes out, we'll know who took what. Uh, it will, you know, if we get down low on the non-rebreathers, it'll prompt him, or myself, both, that we need ordering, we'll order them right then and there. And there's no gap in that, that if he goes in the room and looks, and doesn't recognize that the non-rebreathers are low. And forgets to order them, it'll run out. It just creates a more efficiency system.
Does it prevent them from taking too many?
Yes. Because what it'll do is like me, if I go in and I took. Back to set ten non-rebreathers, you know, and, and I'm thinking, it'll label that and say, okay, Gar took ten non-rebreathers. I can go in and I can go pass, my, or Josh will come and ask me, what takes ten non-rebreathers? You know, well, okay, the truck was empty, you know, what, what? Or they will stop the truck, so you're gonna have to go back and get them.
Okay, you don't have access, maybe they take five, or they want five more, they got ten requests?
Um, you can still do that, but it'll give us a red flag, and we can actually find out why they take five and then come back for the other five. It's a, it's a system that helps us trap that thing.
I assume you use supplies fast enough, and then it goes out of date or expires?
Uh, sometimes.
Okay, that's why.
Yeah, some things, and I think a lot of it's medications.
Okay.
And a lot of it is, that's out of our control. Uh, we try our best. Uh, right now, we're presently. Uh, use data structures to get a lot of medications.
Okay.
The problem is, is she works really hard to give us long expiration dates. But unfortunately, the manufacturer will send them a product and. You know, they'll say that it's two years, but then we'll get the product in six months. A lot of times what we'll do is we'll stop it right there, and we'll actually tell her to send it back. And she's been helping us do that, so we can get her longer expiration dates. But. At the end of the day, a lot of times that doesn't always work, it doesn't, the manufacturer will then turn and send you another one.
They got product they want to get.
Yeah. And that's out of our control. That's the pharmaceutical companies do that, the vendors. We, we try our best. We try to rotate through the trucks, you know, and all that, but at the end of the day. And there's some things that I scratched my head and Josh scratched their head, that there really should be no expiration made on. But it's, it's the business.
Okay.
And I, I can't control that. But I'd like to move forward with this, with your guys' this.
Is there any upfront cost?
No. It's not. It's all included in that. It's all included in that lease program.
Yeah.
Sorry, can I add in?
Yes.
Kelly, you asked about, um, why now? The company that we've used for the last twenty-five years, emergency medical products, is owned by Severna. The, one of the largest medical supply companies in the world. They've taken EMP and put it with Boundary. Boundary owns the rights to Ucapit. So because we're now spending the same amount of money with Boundary, Boundary says, oh, hey, instead of you guys putting forty thousand dollars upfront. For these machines that you've wanted for three or four years, we're just gonna let you have them. So we saw the opportunity. Gar said, let's jump on it.
Thanks, Josh.
It helps a lot better with, you know. You know, watch things going on, you know, um, where they're going, why they're going. You know, we know that there's some things that. Go out that. We wonder where they go, you know? And so this gives us that better control, you know, find out why, you know, why is this product. So much of this product is going out the top of the door. And, yeah, and that's what we're trying to do is, hopefully, streamline that to keep a better control of our supplies. I don't know if it works. Do the cost savings across the nation, but I think we'll have a little bit, but control's out a little bit better.
Control's all, all, we went the same thing with our tooling and all kinds of devices. Plants have vending machines now, or the scans are current, that way they don't have to look to a place and get five. Uh, blades, and then next day they're getting five more, now we have to be hold on, yeah. Vending machine, that's, this is the way of the world. And we looked at it, I said, you know, seven, eight years ago. And when we saw the cost, we backed off. At that time, this program was not off, like Josh said. And we backed off, and, um, this came about, and we've been working on this for two, three months. But I can move forward with it to go. I'm, I'm all for it. Control is.
So that's a program, go do it, Mike.
No, that's separate. You want to talk about that, that's separate. Uh, this is separate. This is more of the medical supplies.
Yes.
What you're talking about is medical equipment, that's the large equipment, the asset management program.
Was that above your program?
Yes, no, it was a ten-year program.
Okay.
Which we'll talk about.
Something three sixty, I remember that.
Yeah, so. But I just want to hear guys' blessing. We can move forward. If it is a lease program, it's a five-year lease program.
If we can lose it, I'll.
Okay. I will be with you. Uh, the asset management program you're talking about, uh, Tom and Kelly had opportunity to attend the meeting back in March. Uh, it's a base for an asset management program, is they take all of our equipment, like, uh. Monitors, cots, the cot system. Uh, Lucas Devices, which is the mechanical CPR device, stair chair. Uh, that we utilize to move people out of the house. What they do is they put together, it's a ten-year lease program. What they do, they come in and, uh. If you were to opt out to replace everything, you know, put brand new and all the ambulances and all that. Uh, it's a certain amount of dollars over consistently over ten years. It's a lot of price. You don't have to deal with the, uh, price increase. Uh, what they do every year. Right now, for example, Stryker, the price in which. Controlled all that stuff, all that medical equipment. They do a price increase once a year, and now they're gonna see if that's gonna change. I think that's gonna stay that way. And typically, they do one in February, then one in October. It's usually a three to seven percent price increase each time. Um, and they gave us an average of four point five percent, you know, in February, and then they do another one in October, same one. On the product. So. You might buy a brand, buy a cot system this year for forty thousand dollars, for example. Next year, it may be sixty thousand. And the next year, it may go, it's keeps going up. So what this asset management program does, it looks at your, looks at your product, what all you have. And then you pay a yearly fee, a flat fee for that, and then you can opt out, you, not opt out. You can decide your three, four, five, if you want to replace all that product. With either all new stuff. Um, and then if year, in year, of year, in year ten. You can either decide you want to re-sign the contract or the no-lease program, or you can opt out. When you look at this program, uh, what you look at is, is all the product, your cots, your monitors and all that. FDA puts an end of life in years on them. So they're only going to take years after that, they recommend it to you to replace. So that's where you run into the challenge of, and I'll give you a good example right now. Um, I bought monitors. Three years ago, four years ago, they were thirty-six thousand dollars.
Each, right?
Yeah. They're right now sixty-five, if you buy them outright. And that's because of all the increases and all that. Um, but anyway, that's just an example of where, what, how, what it's costing. Um, so if you, if you decide that you, we sign this. You know, I'm not saying we are, we signed, replaced our equipment, we decide year five, we want to update all our stuff, either the new stuff or brand new stuff, whatever it is. Then year ten comes around, you don't sign. You'll still have three to four more years left on that before you hit that end of life. So really, in reality, you're getting that lease program for fourteen years. That product, that product, or, because you got it, you know, the first buy, replace it. Um, so we went a little elaborate with the program. We looked at replacing all the monitors. Complete cot system. And stair chairs. And the, uh, Lucas device on all five ambulances, and then my. Monitor that is attached to my vehicle, it's a chase vehicle. Um. It was pretty solid. So we backed off, and we're looking at creating a package. That will help us try to keep up to keep an eye on it. Um, if we can. So we're on with this. We had planned to have him here today to do the presentation for you guys. Uh, when I got that quote, uh, I kind of. Set back my chair a little bit, because it was a little salty. And I, we've been working, him and I, the cell rep and I have been working back together to try to find something, if we can find something that will be. Feasible for us to work here. But I think it's something we're gonna have to look at. Because I have presently two monitors right now are outdated. They were bought two thousand eleven. I have three monitors, or three cots that were bought in two thousand fourteen that are in place. So it's. You know, we're, we're looking at some money there, because we don't use this program, we try to buy it out right every year.
How much is a new cot?
Thirty-three thousand. And that don't count the power load with it either, that's just the cots. I think the power load, the whole system is like, probably, I think it's fifty-some thousand.
Back in fourteen, that's when they improved the cots. Now it's ready to change again. That was the change. So we wouldn't be hurting people's backs, because they love it.
Yeah, that, that was the first step. The, the, the big step is, is now, which the three new trucks are coming, will have the power load. The, the loading system in it, which will help even better with it.
Is it, is it the new one that he showed us?
Yeah. Not the cot. That one's not, no. We'll use the present ones we have now. Uh, but it'll be that power load that's in that yet.
Yeah.
Yes.
That was pretty nice.
Yeah. And that's where the cost, I mean, yes, it costs fifty thousand for the whole program. But one back injury. Will cost you, you can almost buy two systems with one back injury. Unfortunately. And where the, where the back injuries happen is in what they call a deadlift. Is when you go on a lift and put it in the truck. That's what they call a deadlift. Because you have to lift it up enough to get the wheels through, you know, wheels up enough to get into the truck. That's what they call a deadlift. Where this program, where this thing comes out, an arm gets underneath it, lifts the cot for itself, and you just push it in. There's no deadlift there.
And you don't have to fish hard. You just. Give it a little, and it goes on its own.
But anyway, I wanted to let you know that we were gonna have him here today. Postpone that because I want to have something put together that's more. Easier for you guys to understand and be more even audible. Okay, so, uh, last thing, uh, I'm giving pictures of the truck, uh, the trucks, um, the boxes on the chassis. Right now, they were decal-ing it, I think, last week. They gotta do that for, before they get the lights in, and it's moving down the assembly line. Rep thinks with what he's seeing, we may possibly see those first July. But there's, he's still sticking to July fifteenth, but he says the way things are looking, we may get them quicker. And then the remat will probably go in August. That'll take sixty to ninety days, so we're probably looking until November.
How about staff?
Um, we're, we're s- still got the two spots open on the twelve-hour shift. But, um. We hired, uh, an individual, um, he's an EMT, he's going through medic school. He'll finish his medic behind this month. And then once he successfully passes his test, he did, where he does work on the twelve-hour truck. So we'll move him over to medic spot. We'll have a lot easier, probably, opportunity to hire an EMT for him. And then the other twelve-hour shift, uh, the, the girl that's on that is starting the new advanced class that we, we started. Once she completes that, and she'll move to the advanced level, we can hire an EMT to fill that. But we are getting, we are seeing a lot of, uh, individuals applying for part-time. Which that'll help a lot, because in that, they can pick up those open shifts. Bring that overtime down.
That's what we want to see.
So we're working on. But I will say, you know, at the end of the day. The challenge you run into is the most of these individuals that are applying have a full-time job. So they're either going to be available, or they're not going to be available, and that's where that full-timer is looking to cover.
Okay.
And you got, uh, I saw on your, uh, plumb reports, yeah, it's here in front of me, that, uh, collections. Our collection was seventy-five thousand, and one was seventy-three thousand. But the booking period. Right?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and which we collected three hundred sixty-three thousand to this point.
Yes.
And if we average out seventy-five thousand dollars, we stagger that certain, it may be one. Are we gonna get, are we gonna get over that million dollars if we're never gonna? From the end of the. I'm trying to figure that.
If we base it off of seven-five, no, um, and if you look at our last three-month averages, I think we're in the around seventy to seven-five thousand. Um, I think that's about where the numbers are gonna be. You know, it's gonna stay in the, maybe that's seventy and seventy-five thousand every, every month. Um. I would like to build a learning, and you know, we're returning, you know, returning the, uh. Invoices over a lot quicker. Um, you know, getting out. You know, letters to individuals, you know, and we are seeing a better response than what we had in the past, you know. People getting back with us with their insurance information, we're able to bill. So I think that's, I think. Think the collection, they're gonna stay pretty consistent with that number that we have, but I don't know, I can't tell you that we're gonna get over that million-dollar mark. Uh, I would like to, that is my goal, but in the reality is. You don't want to get so much out of the insurance, and then you got, you know, people that are, that don't have insurance. You know, you have to set up payment plans and stuff like that with them, and if they don't comply, then all they do go to collections. And then use it. A lot of them we're seeing are setting up payment plans to. Once in a while, we have to go to small claims, but that's not very often.
I just looked at the old time hours. How they vary. There's some of the hours in which it's four hours per. How they vary, there's some of the hours in which it's four hours per individual, maybe one, like say, uh in eight. Which was part of April, or the second part of April, or May, or any month. That varies, and that depends on the position that is needed.
Yes, positions and time off. You know, what you, what I run, I mean, and I s- I see it, it is, is with the way we change, the way we pay. You know, how we change now, uh on an hourly rate. Um I see the ones that have had probably years uh for the longevity, the, the crew time. Are burning out more of their time, which will make, or maybe they can unlock, they have to backfill that in. And we try to fill that in with the part timers, but if they're not available, the full timers, you know, put their name in. And we have to, we have to fill the positions. So it depends on what, you know, how many people put in for vacation time in that, uh. You know, maybe the first month, there might be a lot of openings, and then at the end of the month, it may not be a lot. But we try our best, uh Jeff takes care of all the scheduling. He, he tried his best to look at getting them part timers to pick that up, you know, but if they're not available. Where we see it a lot more of the weekends, where we find the challenges, particularly due to the weekends. But we've done some things in place, as I said, you know, with some of the two that we, you know, in the twelve hour position. Once they get through their schooling and that, be able, be able to move around it. The, the EMTs are, we have more EMTs applying, probably have paramedics than that. Now, I think that, what that happening will be over, you know, still those twelve hours months.
If they stay compared to two levels up. This one, overtime hours, I just wonder, and I'm sure that has been.
Well, and that's one of the things you look at is, is. With this picking up the fourth truck, that's picked up, that's where your overtime went up, um you know, power wise, you've got those spots that are open. Um and, you know, I know what's been the question is about the fourth truck, but I would say. More often than not, that truck has been utilized a lot, and it's helped out with a lot of coverage in. This county to where we not have counties vacant without an ambulance.
So Attica, Attica's that, they're gonna cover what, Attica covers what?
They cover the upper third, so we split, years ago, they split the county in two thirds, one third, and the reason was because they had two trucks in Beersburg. So Ellsworth Road is the cut, so everything south of Ellsworth is covered by Beersburg, everything north of Ellsworth is covered by Attica. Um they just split that, but there's one ambulance up there, two down here, they thought the two down here would cover that one or two thirds. Now for third, we cover by the Attica station.
Well, we know that we support.
We are known, well, we actually learned that much out of Attica. That's why I brought the fourth ambulance on was because the Attica truck was taking a lot of love yet, Rappersville, Champaign. I mean, they go everywhere, uh they don't go in Wainsworth a lot, um we go there, we do so as much. So that left the northern third, third vulnerable, and we were getting a lot of back to back runs. So I know there was discussion of, okay, can we move a truck from Beersburg up there? We get up there, Attica truck, Beersburg truck goes out, it's down there now, now you move them back in, so it was kind of playing this. So that's why we brought the fourth truck back in, brought that fourth ambulance in during the busy time of, what we felt was nine AM to nine PM. To help when the Attica truck goes out, they can move north. Let the Attica truck up there, still have two down here, down in Beersburg.
Which now has created a problem, because. The station at Attica is not big enough to hold two ambulances, and they need to be plugged in and cooled and heated, so. Now we've created a monster when we added the second ambulance up there. And I know that Garth and myself have went and looked at a facility there at Little Beverage. Great idea, it fits, checks all the boxes, but we've just gotta figure out. Cost, one, and how it's gonna be split in, in that cost, and how, how much is Attica willing to pay and. Cause the way it was always done before was a gentleman's agreement, there was never anything in writing. That if we brought an ambulance there, that they would provide a building for it, well, they did, it started out with a dirt floor. And as ambulances progressed in um. Electronically and everything, they had to have a floor put in, and they had to have heating and air put in, so. And there's no sleeping quarters, the way I understand it, there is now, okay.
So it started, girl, I didn't tell you. It was built to run an eight hour shift, it was basically what it was, and as, as, and then. When the other times it was not staffed, it was staffed by volunteers. Um that's kind of when it went away, and it was just been running, we were running two twelve hour shifts. For one a day, nine one night time, and we just switched to twenty four hour shift now. Um. Even if we did have, but yes, she's right, putting the fourth truck on. The spots a challenge of leaving it up there, but prior to that, that building has uh two things that caused problems, one. We got wrong that building, um the upkeep. I don't want, was not done like it probably should have been, and I'm not gonna think of it anything. Just, it was things that, when they come in done expansion, and they didn't do lots of wiring correctly. Uh there's all kinds of different things, the biggest problem we have is we're on the west side of tracks. We get caught more often than not, tracks being cut, you know, blocked from ADN. So we wanna get over on the other side of tracks to uh to eliminate that problem. And uh so there's a lot of combinations of issues there, yes, she's correct, you know, the fourth truck creates a challenge. But that, we've outgrown that building, and that building is falling apart, and talking with Larry, the mayor, I was going in and looking at. Okay, would you be willing to put some money in this to upgrade it? City does not want to put any money in that building to do anything with it, you know. Uh they would rather take it themselves and use it for, as a city buildings, what I understand, just utilities or whatever it may be. Cause they own all that whole area around there. Um and, you know, so that's where, like I said, we. He had mentioned something about Little Beverage, so we went up and looked at the Little Beverage facility, um. I'm not really mentioning much about it, because we're still trying to figure out, well, just what kind we're, what we're gonna do and all that. I will say that if that is an option, it would fit very well, and I would almost call it a turnkey. Building, move in, be in it, uh there was a discussion in the Attica, with Attica cleaners. Uh we looked it out a year ago, um and there was two, then there was two buyers in front of us. They felt, they fell through that he'd do it, Larry Riles owns it now. He bought it because he did not want anything to come in there that would. He didn't want it, basically, so he's bought it, he's been in there cleaning it up and addressing it. The only thing I worry about that is if we were to purchase that place, if that's the option, or however it works. No matter how you look at it, you're gonna have to go in and build, leave orders aside, I think you're gonna get very costly. To that, whereas a Little Beverage facility.
It fits the bill.
It is there, I mean, they got bathrooms there, they're already established, you know, a shower room, it's all established, the. The, the bays are already established, I mean, it's, I mean, it's somewhat turnkey. They won't, you want donated, but there's been some discussion that maybe this. Can they offer it to the city, cause they wanna build. So I haven't, I haven't, there's a lot of talk, but, but we'll leave things.
But he, he, Mark said we could lease it, and Larry said he would be, he would be thinking like fifty fifty. Fifty fifty lease.
And that's where I'm going with what you're saying too, and I, I think a lot of questions about that is. And that's where I, I think, I don't know how, why we need to approach it, if that's a. One commissioner, three council members, we sit down, think, something, I don't know what it is, I just, you guys give me the insight. I know we need to move forward with something up there, but where do we go from there? Now we're talking money, we're talking a lot of different things, and I'm, this is where you guys got the. All of us together, we're figuring out what we could do, if we can even do it, I don't know.
Money's gonna be tight.
Right, I know that, that's what I said, that's why I'm not really. I just know the number to pass the law, and I, like I said, I don't know how we, how we go forward with this. But I know we didn't, that wasn't on my agenda, I just had. Anybody have any questions, on to answer the question, on to questions.
Thanks, Garth.
Good, thanks, Garth, thank you, um budget hearings. I'd like to do what we did last year.
Dana's here, Dana's here.
Oh, Dana, you have anything?
Hello, everybody's up and running, um everybody seems to be pleased with it, there's still some running, if you guys have been, up and running, doing well. Actually, that's a perfect console, Sunday, oh, okay, but it's good, it really is, um it's a lot. Month early, lots of safety here for the, safety for the guys out there, same, so we didn't have a cool system down now, so it's just. Thank you, Algar.
Thanks, Dana, uh I'd like to do what we did last year, the. The office meeting, just a, a few that morning. And then I have a couple nights in August, where we had our budget hearings. Office holders come in and talk to us at night, uh also helps with the public, it's mornings and night meetings. And then, uh plus it gives us more time to know what our income is possible to meet for next year. As by the first meeting in August, coming in our first, our normal meeting, we want to know. Figures, uh and then maybe one night in September, actually we had our. Budget hearings where we can sit down and put our numbers together, and we'll vote on our budget in October like we do. Next year, if anybody agree with that, so. Holly would like to get people notified, uh can we set a couple nights in?
August, mm-hmm, see, our regular meeting's the twelfth, right?
Correct.
Yes. So, so maybe that evening on the. Twenty eighth, and then, I mean, the week of the nineteenth, or we go to twenty sixth.
Mm-hmm.
Or do you wanna have schedule, you can go. We go to the twenty sixth, then maybe we could, well, I mean, the most, number nine, that we. Say that we, we do the sixteen.
Well, if you do the, if you do the nineteenth and the twenty sixth, that's a Labor Day weekend, is it, I mean. Labor Day week there, is anybody gonna be on vacation, that's what I was thinking.
Yes. The week of the twenty sixth, yeah, so that's a lot, we got the EMT. So we'll, I will have a few hearings on the twelve. Well, twenty, twenty first, twenty second, I mean, any one of those nights, anybody have a conflict?
I, I, I'm free all week.
I prefer earlier in the week.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah, the twentieth.
Sure.
Tuesday, twenty, you want six o'clock?
Yeah, that's fine.
Six o'clock, August twenty. Fourteenth Columbus, so the fifteenth, that's when we'll vote on, so the fifteenth, so vote on our. Three, calling, okay, so there's, let's look at, September then, um. Seventeen.
That's fine.
So then we can also have, so we can have some budgets on the August twentieth. We can have some on the August twelve and September ninth. And then seventeen, you can kind of put things together, cause we're on the fifteen. So we'll have some hearings on August twelve, at our regular meeting here at nine o'clock. And then August twenty, we have that six PM, we'll have hearings. September ninth, at our nine o'clock morning meeting, we'll have some hearings. And then on September seventeenth, we'll start putting things together. Nine o'clock meeting. The understanding, whatever, uh the October, August twelve, September ninth is our normal nine AM. August twentieth and September seventeenth will be six o'clock, and that work are invited? No.
No, regular times. That's the twentieth.
Those are Tuesdays.
Twentieth and seventeenth.
That's a Tuesday, it's a Tuesday, yeah, the nine meetings are Tuesday.
Yeah, we had your participation. Okay, so everybody's very good with that, okay, you can get that. Worked out with the office holders, we've heard, they've done the twelve. The twenty eighth was.
And then the fifteenth will be on, at six PM, or.
Seventeen.
Though, October.
Oh, October sixteen, or not.
It's a nine.
October fifteenth will be.
Nine is Columbus.
Yeah, that's right, got it, got it.
Indigenous people there. I can't say that right.
Indigenous people there.
Yes.
Okay, any other public comments? Uh stay aboard the council, I don't know who you guys are going.
I am.
Twenty second, Ramzan's. Uh is anybody else?
Is anybody going first one to the, the next day, the, the, for that is the budget three.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
You guys are doing virtual, and I am too, right?
Alright.
Can we do it here?
We have, it's a recording session.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Yes, that's right, that's right.
Yeah, well, when, whenever we get it, we can set it down.
Yeah, that'll be perfect, that'll be fine, yeah.
The only one that's going the day before to thing is Brenda.
Yeah. Anybody have anything else?
I make a motion to close that meeting. That's how it's done, ten hours as well, I did.